I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. And we'll start quick with a roll call. Um, E here, Landman.
Here.
Riedrich?
Present.
Darren Camp?
Here.
Nichols?
Here.
And, uh, before the pledge, I'd like to just, um, take a moment of silence if you'd join me. Um, former Plymouth Police Chief, uh, Mike Goldstein passed away on Tuesday. He's been the life, or long, longtime Plymouth Chief and, uh, big, big figure in the community in this part of the state. So, uh, sad loss for the community and for his family. Just wanted to have a moment of silence for him. Thank you. All right. Would you like to stand and join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Onto agenda approval. Uh, does anyone have any additions? There's a couple, uh, modifications.
Yes, there's a revised resolution for O. Diaz?
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Anything from council? I had a thought of, and I'm open to this being a bad idea or a good idea, whatever you guys think, of switching the two planning items in order. Any thoughts on that? No one's super stoked about it? We can just leave it as is?
I think I'll take about the same amount of time.
Okay.
I'm finding it way.
Then we'll just leave it at that. And then if there's nothing else, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended with the updated item that Matt mentioned.
So moved, Darren Camp.
Second, Nichols.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Presentations, we don't have any. Uh, onto open forum.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we have two comment cards so far.
Okay.
So when, when your name is called, can you please go upstate your name and address for the record? Comments are asked to be, try to keep them down to five minutes unless extended by the council for your participation. And the first card is Matt, if you'd please come up.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just real quick too, thanks Matt for sitting, sitting in, but this is comment cards related to anything not on the agenda.
Correct, yes. Anything not on the agenda only.
Go ahead.
Consent agenda, but...
That, that's okay.
Yeah. Matt's on 7485 Fur Lane, the Vasley Crossing. Council members, Mayor, thank you for this opportunity to be able to address the city itself. We know this, in just north of us, we have a couple developments getting ready to go in, which we're excited about because I know the Bergeron Company will be building some really quality homes into our area. But we do have just a few concerns because Fur Lane, the road that I live on, there's only one entrance into the Fairview, I believe it's called, the Fairview Shore, Fairway Shores, I'm sorry. And that entrance is at the end of our street. And with the heavy machinery that they'll be using, earth movers, bulldozers, backhoes, things like that, plus various other construction workers coming back and forth on our road, we're very concerned about the wear and tear on that road and what it's gonna do, take the life away from it. Um, you know, the road is only five years old, six years old now. And, uh, you know, this could take five years off, if not ten years. I'm not sure what the length of it. Our road was put in poorly at the very beginning by MI Homes, which we're very sad about. Uh, and we tried, we addressed the city about it. Um, a few things were done, but not enough to really satisfy our, the neighbors because we really feel the roads could deteriorate quickly. The second thing is that we know there's an easement on the, uh, the other, the Cheswick Family Farm that's a lot of, and we're just wondering, will they, will Bergeron builders have access to that road, that easement? Will they be able to use that? Uh, if they, if they are, that would really take, take the traffic away on our area and also the wear and tear of the machinery that they'll be bringing in to move the earth. And so we really, uh, ask this, you know, the city to be thinking about those kinds of things, like what can happen with that. Uh, the other thing is to, where's everybody gonna be parking? Um, they're gonna be parking on land that they're moving? Or they may park it on our streets? And our streets are narrowed up. You know, I know there's signs right now that the city put up last year, or last fall, which we appreciate, that says no parking on this side of the road, but there are parking on the other side. It still makes it, uh, you know, a lot of traffic, we, a lot of people walking every day that you have dogs and animals, things like that. So we really wanna, you know, hopefully the parking parts addressed. And then lastly, um, we really were concerned about, you know, especially like the last few days of rain that we've had, almost the three plus inches that we received here in the Corcoran area. What we, what we're concerned about is the trucks going back and forth carrying mud out. And will they, will they be, um, supposed to be clean? Will they sweep the streets every day to keep those roads clean? Keep the mud and debris off? Um, 'cause it will make a mess. And, uh, I know when MI was building, when I was, we were one of the first few homes Fur Lane was, but when they were building the other, other areas, uh, MI was required to sweep the roads every day. At least, not that they were required, but they were there sweeping them every day. So it really made it nice how it cleaned up. So those are our concerns. We're concerned about, you know, the wear and tear of the parking and cleaning the roads and if that easement available. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have another?
Uh, yes, Randy Bogler.
Hi, good evening, council. Thank you, my name is Randy Bogler, 1959 Foxline Drive. Uh, I'd like to bring to the council's attention the conditions of our dirt roads are absolutely horrendous. Trail Haven, if you haven't been down there lately, uh, there's a large hill that, about Ninety Second and Trail Haven with the cemetery. Uh, the hill goes up on both sides, uh, to a private driveway on top. And the road is washed out. It's been washed out on both sides, on both sides of the hill, on both sides of the road, uh, since spring. Nothing has been done to it. What happens is people drive, rather than ride with their, their tires in the washout, they drive down the middle of the road. It's a blind hill. I have had so many close calls on top of that hill, it's not funny. I came to the city council many years ago and asked for a stop sign to put atop the hill. The council agreed with me. They said, yes, we will put a stop sign up there. Nothing ever happened, not a thing. Right now, the entrance to, uh, my neighborhood, Tree Line Drive off Trail Haven, there's pot holes a foot deep all the way across it and down about twenty feet. Same thing with the intersection on the other end of Trail Haven and Foxline. Same thing. You can't get through there without getting a pot hole. Now, yeah, it causes a lot of damage to vehicles. I've had to spend a lot of money fixing my vehicles over the years. Uh, yeah, every time you hit a pot hole and it's full of water and your truck, your vehicle gets splashed, now I gotta wash them every time I drive down there. But, uh, think about public safety. What happens when a fire truck gets down there? They're gonna spend a one point five million dollar truck driving down those crappy roads with, uh, with half a million dollars worth of gear on and bolts they're on? Now you got an ambulance, same thing. They're gonna, they're gonna drive their expensive rigs down there. They're not gonna go fast. Uh, you got a patient back, they're gonna be bouncing all over the place. It's not a safe deal. Uh, our roads need to be maintained. Uh, over the years, I've heard many times, we grade our roads six to seven times a year. Never in the year, I bet you in thirty-five years, it has never been graded more than three, three or four times a year. When they started doing salt, they said, oh, this'll help, uh, this'll help maintain the integrity of the roads. Yes, it keeps the salt, it keeps the dust down, but it hasn't done anything for the integrity. The pot holes just get harder. Guess that's all I got. Thank you for your email.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy.
Okay. Was that it?
Those are the only two cards. I have four other cards, but they are for the planning items under number seven. Is there anyone else for?
Anyone else for open forum? Okay, then we'll move right along. Onto consent agenda, um, which consists of items six A through six R. Does anyone wanna pull anything? One once, one place. Okay. I will entertain a, a motion to approve consent agenda items six A through six R.
So moved.
Second, Darren Camp.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Onto planning business, which we'll have, uh, we'll do two separate public comment opportunities. Um, so we'll start with, see if we didn't switch those up. So we'll do seven A, um, and I'm trying to think of order here. Do we wanna do, do we have a presentation?
So it's up to you. Typically, we've done public comments first and then staff presentation.
Okay, let's do that.
At the planning commission, we do it the opposite way. So it's up to you.
Let's do the public comment and then we'll do, go into the presentation. So anyone who'd like to speak on, I think we have some comment cards, maybe you can start with that?
Yeah, I have three comment cards on seven A. Mandy is first one.
Good evening. My name is Mandy Anderson and my family moved to Corcoran in 2020. I'm gonna share with you my reasons to why I'm requesting...
Mr. Mayor? Can we get their address, please? We need everybody's address, too. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm going to share with you my reasons to why I'm requesting the city to not grant permission for commercial use in this rural residential area. My husband and I both work in the construction industry in the cities on both commercial and heavy highway projects. Our adult lives have primarily been spent around traffic, equipment, lots of people. Prior to our move in 2020, my husband and I lived in Maple Grove with our family. We wanted more peace in our lives outside of work, to slow down and raise our children in an environment surrounded by nature. We needed a change. We researched for a long time and a property came up for sale just under five acres and the home was seventy percent complete. It was a short sale and we took all of our savings and sweat equity and put it into our dream home in this rural residential area to raise our family. We were building in the city we wanted to grow our family. After five years of living in Corcoran, we have reaped the benefits of our sacrifices made in order to live in an area surrounded by trees, singing birds, pheasants, turkeys, and even owls at night. The peaceful sunrises and sunsets have been enjoyed in the summer without the faint noise of traffic or voices or people doing their daily activities. We just were able to simply enjoy what we were doing in that moment. I recently heard that a home was sold three houses down from us and the property owners requesting to use the property for commercial use. My family chose this location because there was no commercial zoning or mixed-use zoning in the area. We invested into this property for the enjoyment of leaving our work environment behind and being able to spend our weekday evenings and weekends outside in the serene comfort of our home. This is what we believe we purchased in 2020. When the eighty-seven fifty Trail Haven rural home was sold, the buyer knew it was zoned as ru, as rural residential. It would not serve the current community who purchased their property in rural residential area to have this property changed to commercial use. The city of Corcoran currently has areas zoned for commercial use and mixed use where it would not affect changing the existing community. It will affect the enjoyment of our property if there could potentially be seventy-five people on the property on Saturdays and Sundays from seven AM to eleven AM and in addition weekdays from five AM to seven AM and six PM to eight PM, which is the same time as my family has outside of work hours to enjoy our property we purchased in the rural residential area to escape, uh, what this conditional use permit is requesting. I received in the mail the other day the city of Corcoran updates, which had an article about the land use bill that would remove the city planning from the local level to the state level, which would remove any community input for the city zoning and planning. The city encouraged residents to contact lawmakers to oppose these newly proposed bills. I am asking that the city of Corcoran take that same response and apply it to this situation and consider instead of looking at it from a local planning level, to revisit the requests of the current resident who puts their family's future in a rural residential area, planning to enjoy their property outside of work hours without hearing commercial use additional noise.
Thank you.
Next up, Catherine Dreebus.
Okay.
Catherine Dreebus, six seven four seven Old Sturbridge Road. I am a almost thirty-nine-year resident of Corcoran. And I want Corcoran to be, like the, the city says, to be vibrant and connected. I think places of worship are the heart and soul of any community. It's what the community builds around, no matter what the faith is. And I want to point out that there are, if I'm right, five different places of worship in Corcoran. They are all in a location that to me is very similar to where the Mahaven Temple would go. They are located adjacent to a county road. Some have access from that county road, some, um, are a little bit further in. There's only one, which is the one up here on Maple Hill, which is kind of tucked back. But as far as traffic goes, it's probably the worst intersection to try and get in to it. So I, I think that the city council should take that into consideration. What kind of community do we wanna be? We wanna welcome people? Um, I think also in reading, in listening at planning commission and also in reading the documents, this is a small community that seems very responsible and is being built with all kinds of constraints on it that were not present when places like, um, Emmanuel Methodist was built, St. John's Lutheran was built, um, even St. Thomas, which is one ago, and Hope Church. Hope Church started out very similar to this, um, in a very, you know, kind of concentrated, small residential location. They knew they were gonna expand, they had plans, they prepared for that. So I think if this community would expand, it just seems like from what I've read, they're very responsible. I also wanna bring up the number of people over the years on my little Old Sturbridge. For a while, we had, um, I can't remember how many years, but Pastor Derek. And he, once a week, would have like a, I wanna call it like a house church, a host community kind of church. And there were probably a good ten, twelve cars in that driveway, once a week. And really, he was on one sixteen, the rest of us just went past. Really didn't trouble or bother anybody, kind of isolated. I don't know, you know, if, if anybody else was bothered. Um, and I also wanna point out, we have, um, a couple of very large families in my neighborhood. And on any given Sunday, we can have ten to fifteen cars with those families, too. And, you know, it's family noise. They are out in their front yard. They go for walks through the neighborhood after Sunday dinner. It's, it's okay. It's okay. They're there, you know? And that is a neighborhood. And I think we can be a neighborhood. And where this location is, I don't really see it truly bothering a lot of people when I look at the map. Yes, there are nice homes, uh, large acreages, but they're not right there, right next to it. And I think what the city code has to protect the site, to protect the people around it as it, as it's transitioned, is a good plan. And so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Winston Kirkpatrick?
Hey, Dr. Kirkpatrick. I live at two one four two zero County Road Ten, Corcoran. Uh, I'm gonna read, uh, something that I wrote, uh, when discussing the Mahaven Temple with, uh, planning and zoning commission. I'm writing to express my concerns in regards to the request to approve, approve a conditional use permit in-site plan to allow the operation of a place of worship at eighty-seven fifty Trail Haven Road. This property is directly south of my property across, across County Road Ten. In regards to the following conditional use permit guidelines, the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the conditional use will promote and enhance the general public welfare and will not be detrimental or to, not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, or comfort. Uh, my main concern here is that I feel the conditional use permit does not protect the current community from the natural side effects of a property that will be used as a place of worship. I would like to respectfully take this opportunity to express my concerns. The site plan, I don't feel in any way takes into consideration community growth of the place of worship. That's a good thing with any place of worship. Having a stipulation to have a parking lot with a certain number of stalls does not in any way guarantee that the community size or membership of the place of worship will stay the current size that it is. A parking lot does not change the community, a parking lot does, in fact, change the community landscape completely. You cannot plant landscaping and expect to blend any place of worship into a community that is already only residential homes and agricultural land in that area. Correctly angled lighting does not prevent light pollution. You cannot logistically place restrictions on entering and exiting the property to prevent the light pollution that constant flow of headlights will become at a certain time. The noise on the weekends is also a concern for me, considering the hours of operation that I already noted last summer, fall, when New Mahaven was meeting and I could hear their services at my house. Those concerns are precisely why I feel we see most places of worship located on or near commercial use properties. I would like the council to consider what would happen when the membership of New Mahaven Temple grows to the point where more parking is needed? Is there a plan for more parking spaces? Will traffic safely, will traffic safety need to be addressed with turn lanes or a roundabout? How will that affect the surrounding properties? I was completely shocked myself to see that the road safety study did not find any concerns with potential increased traffic. County Road Ten is extremely busy in the mornings and the evenings, Mondays through Friday. And any person that visits my property is told to be extremely careful watching for traffic. Traffic coming from the west and the east can be very hard to detect when exiting Trail Haven onto County Road Ten. I was hoping to see that the planning commission looked into statistics on what type of auto accidents occur at the intersection of Trail Haven and County Road Ten. I've seen enough in the three years that I've lived there to have a strong respect and concern for that intersection. Also, I feel the council, if, if this is approved, they can't guarantee that a place of worship directly across from my property will not lower my property value. The council can't state that the conditional use permit will promote or enhance my general welfare when it is highly likely to reduce my property value. The main concerns regarding reduced property, their property value to those directly near the proposed use of the property are as follows. Increased localized traffic directly across from the property, noise pollution, car light pollution, and property changes that most, property changes to the Haven address that will most likely prevent potential property resale to the residential market. Finally, approval of this conditional use permit would set a very concerning precedence for future use of the land in Corcoran's residential and agricultural location. I would be concerned with what other conditional use permits that would be allowing this community. I am concerned that the proposed changes to the property make the property itself far less appealing to possible future buyers, basically changing the property to the point that it is no longer appealing to anyone in the residential market, thereby forcing myself and surrounding homes to tolerate non-residential use over and over and over. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to voice my concerns. I hope you will take them into consideration when considering this. It would be my preference as a member of this community that the conditional use permit be denied.
Thank you.
That is all the cards I have for seven A. I have two for seven B, but there's...
Does anyone else wanna speak on seven A? You can start with your name and address for the record, that's great.
Uh, my name is Richard Harvey, uh, eighty-eight fifty Trail Haven Road. I'm the property directly north of the, uh, New Mahaven conditional use permit. I believe the site plan is required and the addition that is gonna be put up on the pole building is not compliant with the conditional use permit. It makes the pole building out of compliance with the city ordinance because it would be too large for the zoning, for the lot size. Uh, to avoid this, they're proposing to circumvent the city ordinance by swapping the home and the pole building classification, making the home an accessory structure and the pole building a primary structure. There's no requirement or precedent for council accommodating and approving this. It could be setting a little precedent for others in the city that wanna circumvent the rules and build larger accessory structures. And by calling them a primary structure. Basically, uh, regards to the paved parking lot, um, with the trees and the pavement and everything else, you're basically gonna make it, uh, look like the new, um, the brand-new Domino Pizza parking lot that's gonna be actually bigger than what's the Domino's lot. There's way more slots, there's way more spaces. And it's not in keeping with the, uh, the nature of the rural residential neighborhood that's there. It's not in keeping with what we all perceived as a rural, you know, a rural setting. Basically, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Good morning, 19359 E. V. Road. Good evening, uh, council members, uh, expected council members. As a resident of Corcoran for the past seven years, um, I, uh, I, and you being the, uh, you know, maintenance of the city, looking for the concerns, I can understand your viewpoint, the resident viewpoints, uh, and the concern of the neighbors. And, uh, as this new Mahavan community is concerned, it's a very peaceful, loving community who is aware of the neighborhood needs and they want to live in safe and harmony with, uh, the neighborhood. And most importantly, we'd like to work, uh, with the city in order to do what is needed, so that we are coexisting and in harmony with everyone. So we'd like to, uh, I mean, you, you respect the concerns of the neighbors they have chosen, that they have expressed. And, uh, we are willing to work with the, uh, city to fulfill that. Historically, if you see, the Corcoran has grown. It's a neighbor city, neighboring city to, uh, Maple Grove and Plymouth, which are saturated. And it's growing at an average of five percent since when, like, two thousand it has grown thirty-six, thirty-six percent. And it's going to grow. The traffic is going on to rise. And, uh, how can we stop that is a big concern. I mean, uh, uh, on one hand, we, uh, we have to let people as, 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 uh, as, you know, owners of the city, you'll have to let people in. And you have let a lot of people, um, in. And, uh, this property is right at the busy traffic, which is Highway Ten, which is already busy and noisy. Uh, so the concerns about light and other things, uh, has very minimal value given all the traffic studies, this has already been performed on that. Uh, and this community, this Mahavan community is, historically has been, uh, for good or bad reasons, has remained the same. And, uh, this is more of a Bible study group, where, unlike a church, where people just study in groups, small groups. And so even if we have the temple, they'll have study groups in separate places anyways. So we're not likely to look historically speaking. Given that fact, um, we did have a petition raised to, to support the temple outside of the community and a lot of, uh, to our, thanks to the support, they are not members of the community, but they supported Co-Lakayi. We got about three hundred, uh, signatures, out of which, uh, more than fifty percent are from Corcoran residents and about forty percent are neighboring cities like, um, Maple Grove, uh, Plymouth, Edina and Rogers. So we see that they are welcoming to having a, uh, temple in the community, which will foster, uh, spiritual and, uh, cultural growth. Uh, temple historically has proved that... Temple historically has proved that it gives up, increases or gives a better to economic growth and also it, and the general well-being of the people, which influences the health. Look at the stress problem in the country, twenty percent of the youth are suffering from stress issues. How much more beneficial would be a church or which, which, you know, focuses on thought realization and personal consciousness? So, we really thankful to the neighbors who have extended the support to us. And the city should not be concerned that they will be visiting us, they might be visiting, but their support is greatly appreciated and I hope as owners of the city will recognize their opinion. So, I, in light of all these facts, I really, on behalf of all the supporters, five hundred plus one hundred and fifty residents who have supported the petition, I strongly and enthusiastically urge the council members to pass this cap. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good time. Anybody else? Kamala?
Hi, everyone.
Name and address, please. Thanks.
I want to say thank you without opportunity to speak. My name is Sauraj Mukherjee. I live in Ravinia six-six-six-zero Carriage Way. I bought the house in twenty fifteen and one of the first residents since Ravinia was a town. Ravinia for about ten years. I'm also an investor and I invest in Rogers, corporate land, properties, rentals, so, several things too. I'm basically a finance guy. So, I did want to talk about the economic aspects. So, Al Dilla Tungu Captain Sekh, someone from Manoj said. So this stuff economics can actually reality from an actual example. I understand the concerns expressed and I think about it, but let's talk about some stuff. So, the Hindu temple was built while I've been in Minnesota, been in Minnesota for just over twenty years. So it's been built over in Maple Grove, most of you know where it is, it's Alpha One-O-One. And in the first five years, there were two hundred and eight homes built around that temple, on that road and on Troy Lane, actually, yes, on Troy Lane. And in the next five years, another two hundred and fourteen homes were built. That's about, in today's market, steady state, seven fifty grand on average. You can argue numbers are a lot, but that's about four million tax base at a one-point-three-percent, four hundred and forty taxes. Robert Thomas started building luxury townhomes on the road leading up to the temple, something I didn't think was possible. And that's an area I'm actually looking to invest in as well now. Also, they've built up the problem about and they've improved the infrastructure because of the luxury townhomes coming up there. I don't know if the builder, I don't know if the builder of the city, but it's a Maple Grove situation. So, we're talking an area between four and five million tax base added because of the temple being there. Now, I don't know for a fact if it's because the temple was built there or everyone is going to build there anyway, but, because I don't want to add causality. But the point that has been made, and I actually agree, right, because people are place of worship of, what is it, of property values. That's an actual example, and property values are going up. Those values, the properties that were built, at the time I bought in Corcoran, those same properties have appreciated around the same percentage. They all have been done, so about the same percentage. Now, will that happen in this temple with this, what Manoj is recommending? I don't know. But what I can say is there's already a precedent for zoning or whatever you need to do to get there. It's only real estate, so I know some of what works on there. But what I'm trying to bring forward is what the concerns are about, an actual example, an actual economics. Please check my notes, I don't want to learn what I'm saying. But it shows that there really isn't any cause of insult. And with that, I'd request approval in the temple, please. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Please forget how I look. I was tearing up a hundred-and-ten-year-old house and it wasn't cooperating, so I apologize.
Don't worry, no dress code.
My name is Jason Woody. I live at two-one-zero-four-zero County Road 10. Glad to see everybody here. I'm a forty-one-year resident as of May, which, I wish I can go backwards, but I can't. So I've watched Corcoran become something from, you know, a veteran community to a foreign community to what it's becoming today. You know, progress is progress. We've pushed it off for many, many years, up until the last, I mean, ten years ago. And it is definitely inevitable, but the way you progress can be definitely curtailed or catered to in a sense. I'm not against any one race, creed, color, religion, grade. I raised Catholic, Catholics confirmed at St. Thomas there. I'm not against anybody with their faith and wants to, you know, promote their faith, but people in Corcoran have paid a premium, an absolute premium, to keep it pristine, keep making little civility that we have. Eight bridge lots, beautiful yards, nice little homes. We've put up with, like a gentleman said earlier, potholes in the roads, horrible roads, but hey, you know, gravel is hard to maintain. We didn't have, for many, many, many decades, we, I was in high school doing, you know, reports on dialogue internet. I mean, these are some of the things that we have sacrificed to maintain this rural community. Now, if you want to put this large facility in there for a place of worship or a church in rural residential, I just don't think it fits. You know, it, you know, just because they meet the setbacks and easements and the guidelines and this, that and the other thing, and you let them do this, then it opens up the floodgates for, for other projects. What if somebody, for instance, wants to start opening a gentleman's club?
Mr. Mayor, just real quick, Jason, if you could address us, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're, you're talking to us, not to the, not to the audience out here, please. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So what if somebody wants to put up a gentleman's club out here? You know, oh, we met the requirements, the setbacks, they got the escrow money, we got this, that and the other thing. Would that fit with the community? I don't think so. There's a time and a place for everything and I think that the manner in which they want to use it, we have designated areas in the city for that, you know, particular activities. Not only that, the property values are a big thing. People, you know, are very concerned about the values of property because some people, that is their biggest investment they have. Some only have a portfolio, all they have is their house and they're banking on that for their future. So if we start doing things in a haphazard manner and property values go down, that's really going to have a detrimental impact to the residents. Secondly, the safety. There's about forty-some cars parked down Trail Haven. It's not easy to see on. And we have that many extra cars, I think it increases a safety factor. Also, with that much traffic on the gravel road, we're having a hard time keeping them together to begin with without spending huge money. With that extra traffic, that is going to do nothing but eat up our roads. And it, and how they want to change the primary structure to the alt building and the alt, and then the house as the auxiliary structure, well, you can't live in a pole barn with no water, with no plumbing. There's certain things you have to follow. You can't have an occupancy permit there because it's not even suitable for living. And then also being a church, they're a church, so they're nonprofit. Then also an eco-farm LLC, I believe, which might be a nonprofit. You know, that's taking off the tax roll, that's taking off the tax base. And that's further straining our community resources. I know there's stress kind of been and I know that the city is working very hard to, to maintain the level of civility that we have. And I think if this goes through, you will be doing a huge, huge disservice to the residents around it, your community, and the level of civility. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And anybody else? Going once? Going twice? Hey, Adal, if you'd like, or please.
It's actually doing it.
Perfect.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, seven A tonight is the New Haven Temple Site Plan and Conditional Use Permit. Just a quick overview of the request. Curty Higroll and the New Haven Temple request approval of the Conditional Use Permit and Site Plan to allow operation of a place of worship within the rural residential district. Within the applicant's narrative, they expect to have weekend services from seven AM to four PM, in which there'd be around twenty-five people on the site between those hours on Saturdays and Sundays. And then weekdays, they would have typically two people there around sunrise at five AM to seven AM and then again at sunset from six PM to six, or to eight PM, sorry. The subject property is eighty-seven fifty Trail Haven Road on the corner of Trail Haven Road and County Road 10. This is a five-point-six-five acre property, which is currently zoned rural residential and is guided rural slash ag residential. The surrounding properties are also zoned rural residential and are used for a mix of rural residential and agricultural uses. The twenty-fourty Conferencing Plan does not identify any natural characteristics on the site. The items being considered tonight are a site plan, a conditional use permit for the place of worship, and then a conditional use permit to allow the accessory structure to exceed the height of the principal structure. If the proposal complies with the zoning ordinance, the city must, must approve the site plan and Conditional Use Permit. So going into the actual site plan itself, the proposal includes a seven-hundred-and-sixty-square-foot expansion to the east side of the pole barn. The existing footprint of the accessory building, which is the house, is two-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty-six square feet. This would exceed the allowed accessory structure footprint for the property based on its size. And to comply, the applicant is planning to remove a twenty-four-by-one-foot strip from the backside of the garage of, of the accessory building. The height of the accessory structure, which in this scenario would be the house, exceeds the height of the principal structure by about two feet. And the applicants do, are not planning to change the heights of either structure and this is something that can be approved through a Conditional Use Permit. The building materials, and I apologize for the small text here, but the, the temple is required to comply with the residential building standards of the zoning ordinance. And in their plan, the applicants are proposing that the east and western façades be upgraded to hardy-smooth panel siding with trim batten boards, as well as the expansion area on the, on the sides of the, of the building. The remaining area on the north and south façades would maintain the existing building materials and would be painted to match the, the new siding. Overall, forty-point-nine percent of the existing facade would be upgraded and all façades would comply with the residential building materials standards. With the expansion of this size, a seven-hundred-and-sixty-square-foot addition, the pole barn would be required, or an addition to the pole barn, would be required to plant the following landscaping improvements. One additional overstory tree and three understory shrubs. The applicant is proposing thirty-five additional overstory trees and one hundred, one hundred and four understory shrubs, which with the existing vegetation on the site would be sixty-one trees in total and one hundred and four shrubs in total. Many, most of the new plantings are concentrated around the parking lot, driveway and pole barn to provide screening from the adjacent properties. And no more than thirty-three percent of the required trees can be of the same species. The applicant's plans do comply with that standard as well. Based on the number of seats that are proposed within the temple, the minimum number of parking stalls required would be nineteen. The applicant is proposing twenty-one parking stalls, which meets that minimum parking requirement. And it also meets the minimum dimension requirements for ninety-degree parking stalls. That's for the, the stall width as well as the drive aisle. Currently, there are two access points, one to the, to the home and then one directly to the pole barn. The applicants are proposing a shift of the southern access point and they would shift it in between the pole barn and the house and that would serve the parking lot behind the, the temple. The applicant is proposing the installation of eight sconces, two for each corner. These lighting fixtures would be approximately nine feet above grade and would be required to meet the brightness and cutoff angle requirements of the city code, which is a maximum glare of one-foot candle measured at the property line and a cutoff angle of ninety degrees or less. The applicant didn't specify either of these items in their plan, so a condition of approval would be that they provide additional materials to these fixtures so that we can confirm compliance with that.
I have a question on this point because it came up in comment. Is there a code requirement that they have to add these lights?
There is no code requirement that they are required to install those lights.
Okay, thank you.
One item that came up during the concept plan review was the topic of signage. At that time, it was communicated to the applicants that no signs are allowed within the rural residential district and, and they have adjusted their plans and have removed the signage that was initially planned, so that complies with that, that standard. All exterior storage of trash and garbage are required to be screened on all sides. Currently, the plan shows screening on three of the four sides, so an additional condition of approval would require screening on that fourth side. Currently, the two structures are within the minimum setback area but are legal, non-conforming structures. And the applicant is planning an expansion on the backside of the pole barn, which would not encroach further within that setback area and, and can be allowed through, through city code. Moving or shifting into the Conditional Use Permit portion of the application, one of the Conditional Use Permits is for the place of worship. Places of worship's are identified as conditional use within the rural residential district, meaning that they must comply with the standards of section ten-seventy point zero-two-zero, which are listed starting on page seven of the attached report. Staff finds that these standards are satisfied with the proposed application with the additional comments listed below where I'm at on the screen here. A limited number of guests at any one time to thirty-five, with the exception of four times per year for holidays, that they could go up to seventy-five guests at a singular time. Additionally, all parking must be accommodated on the site and they cannot use Trail Haven Road or County Road 10 to satisfy their parking requirements. And all structures are required to comply with the property maintenance standards in, in city code, which is chapter eighty-seven. The other Conditional Use Permit within this application is, is for the accessory structure height. Accessory structures typically are required to be below the height of the principal structure. However, they can exceed that through the Conditional Use Permit, which would require compliance with the standards of section ten-thirty point zero-two-zero subdivision five D. Staff finds that these standards have been satisfied with the proposed application and recommend approval of that one as well. So as you're deliberating and considering this application, some items to consider for the council would be, does the request meet the standards of the Conditional Use Permit? If not, what conditions could be added to mitigate some of, of, of the impacts to the surrounding neighborhood? And if there aren't any conditions that could satisfy these standards, what facts would there be to, to support that, that conclusion? So ultimately, at the Planning Commission meeting on, on May first, the Planning Commission voted to recommend denial of the New Haven application and staff recommends approval of the resolution approving the Conditional Use Permit and Site Plan for the New Haven Temple.
Thank you. And note on that, Corinne had kind of had some context that I've shared with everyone, but, so. Or what that's worth. Any questions for Dwight off of that?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Go for it.
If I may, Dwight, great job on the, on the information you've given us and the recommendation. I understand everything about that. The question that I have starts out with, in rural residential worship places are a use, correct? So my question is, is if somebody were to come, I'm sorry? You just cleared your thing.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Jeremy always corrects me if I'm wrong, so I appreciate it. The question I have is if somebody came to us and bought a five acre or a ton acre parcel, any part of our rural residential area, ag residential, whatever we call it, and requested to build a church or a worship place, the implications at that point would be the church would need to be made of stone, brick, glass, all of these things. That's one. Number two, parking lot, appropriate sites, parking lot and such, and obviously mitigation for the runoff waters and those kind of things. Two things that aren't part of this. A change in ownership of the property bothers me a lot to just be able to make and modify and change things from accessory building to the main residence or the main, whatever we're calling it, and then the house turning into a accessory building. None of this makes sense to me and I, I apologize.
Clarifying question.
Please.
Do you mean a future change, like a hypothetical change?
I, 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 I went from buying the five or ten acres to put in a church, all of these things, to a church, if, if a worship place were to come, they would be required a lot more things. I'm, I'm falling back to St. Thomas and everything that they're having to do to build their new church and such.
Natalie might be able to speak on that a little bit?
Yeah, do you want to? It's your first.
Sure. Yeah, so in this instance, the temple is required to comply with the residential district standards for the building materials, which is typically, or within the city code, is typically more strict than they are in the public institutional district. To my understanding, the St. Thomas building requirements, building material requirements are more so strict from the Catholic Church as a whole than it is from the city's standards. So if another, if another church came in on another rural residential property, they would be required to comply with the same standards of the resident, rural residential district.
So they'd be able to build a pole shed for a worship place?
Theoretically, as long as the siding, the siding matches the rural residential standards. So there could, there could certainly be a more open building, but as long as the siding and the roof materials meet the rural residential standards, as is currently proposed with this application, it would be in compliance with the district standards. So you look at the underlying zoning district and I would say the, the non-residential district standards arguably can be, you know, I think with our industrial, we have a bit more like blast requirements and we had, in our northeast district and southeast district, we have a requirement that façades be broken up. But that isn't the case in all commercial districts and it is not the case in the rural residential district. So as part of this application, if you would like some more building articulation, that could be something discussed.
No, you, you're answering it as far as the rural residential and yes, it could be made of whatever structure and those kind of things, as long as the outside appeared to the standards and such. I understand that. As far as the parking lot, I can't put the numbers together. They're asking for seventy-five seats in the worship space, twenty-one parking spots, no more than thirty-five people at a worship service at a time. All of these things are very, very specific, so why seventy-five chairs in the worship area and only thirty-five people per worship time?
Yeah, I was using a couple different things.
Who's, who's going to monitor those numbers? Who's going to make sure they don't over, over, overpopulate the building, all of these things? It's, there's just a lot of stuff. Go ahead.
Yep, so it's ten to twelve families, so they expect ten to twelve cars on a regular basis. So that would be, and then the third, the, they actually, I believe, they're correcting them wrong. It's about twenty-five people that are anticipated for the weekly services on the weekends. But the thirty-five is the limit that was identified to allow for some growth. They don't expect to have a lot of growth within their, within their group, but that is just to make sure that there is a little bit of leeway. And then if it were to start to exceed that, that is when they would have to come back for a CUP amendment. That would be a chance for us to look at whether there is anything to suggest that really it can't grow beyond what it's currently at. Have they outgrown the site? That would, would, that would kind of be the trigger point that they need to come back and relook at the site. Because right now, it's really been built for more about thirty-five. The thirty-five was actually Planning Commission recommendation. Staff, I believe, was just more focused on the parking lot size and making sure they don't outgrow the parking lot size. So the thirty-five's a little arbitrary. That was based on the Planning Commission. They wanted to allow for some growth and then also keeping in mind that what they anticipate right now is twenty-five. The seventy-five people is for when they have their holidays. I believe there's two to four holidays that they have a year and they can speak to a little more and they have family members, a little bit more family members that are coming to these congregations. So again, they're expected to carpool a lot. The, it's seventy-five people max that would be allowed on the premises for that.
But who would monitor that?
So that would ultimately be the responsibility of staff to go and monitor if we receive a complaint. So that would, that would be the case of any.
Complaint based?
Correct. Yeah, complaint based, or we could, if you'd like, there could be something in the CUP standards that, you know, staff needs to attend a service or something like that once a year to confirm compliance. I don't know, I would have to talk to things about that. But the reality is it would be just like any other IUP we have for home occupation, where staff is responsible for monitoring compliance, but the standards are applicable.
Thank you. A little bit of history for everybody here. As far as the temple in Maple Grove, I was part of that. Absolutely promoted that without hesitation, but there's a difference there. That was within the Musa line. It had city water, it had city sewer. The comparison to put a worship space in a residential area, rural residential, compared to the temple, two different things. And then, then that was, goodness gracious, twenty some odd years ago. I, I claim to live in Maple Grove, Corcoran for the last forty years now, more closely to Corcoran than Maple Grove. But that's a big deal. That temple is a wonderful place to visit and see and I absolutely love it. Most recently, the BAPs religion is and has purchased property down in Medina and they're building a temple. I come from a small Methodist church in Maple Grove. It was, it's called Crosswinds. We started in basements for worship services and prayer meetings and those kind of things. Moved ourselves into, oh my gosh, I am dating myself, the old theater in town, in Maple Grove. We grew into that. And then, once we got to a point, we grew to the point where we purchased a piece of property, followed all the ordinances and everything else and now is located on Crosswinds, property off of Weaver Lake Road, just west of four ninety-four. So startup churches, startup worship services, all of these things mean a lot to me. And I think somebody said it. Religious preference, those kind of things, I don't see that. I see good people in everybody. I just, this does not make sense to me to convert a residential home and a place into a worship place. This started coming to us by talking originally a eco-farm and then it has quickly morphed into a worship space and nothing done related to an eco-farm or anything. In fact, the farmer that owns the property to the south has planted everything on this property along with his property to the south and his concerns are related to runoff and those kind of things from the twenty-one spot parking place, not going into a mitigation pond or anything for salt and all of these things. So that's his concern and I don't see him in the audience tonight. I am terribly concerned about the intersection of Trail Haven and ten and it is not exaggerated by the residents and such. I live approximately three quarters of a mile to a mile away from this. I travel ten frequently and such and sightlines are horrible. Randy, thank you for your comments related to our gravel roads. Even though you and I may disagree about paving them, I, I, I like my gravel roads and it does slow people down on my road, but you've got a whole different thing. But I just see too many things that don't protect the neighbors. If a church were to be built or a worship space were to be built from scratch, there would be burms along ten, there would be burms along Trail Haven to protect everything from headlights and those kind of things. Not just add more trees, bushes, pines, whatever we call those things. It would also require upgrade of Trail Haven to go to a tarred road, at least to the driveway of this place. The traffic studies that go out there are, I can, I, I have a lot of disbelief in those, but right turn, left turn lanes, to do this is something I'd rather put in before and not after the fact and not after a serious accident at that intersection. To build a worship place, to build a temple, to build whatever we want to call this, without the expectation of growth and those kind of things, it just doesn't make sense to me to have some place to populate seventy-five. I don't believe that they're going to be able to get the parking on their property in twenty-one parking spots for their four events. The last thing I wanted to talk about, three of us were on this side of the dais. Mark, were you part of this yet? Michelle, I don't remember. But we had the same kind of thing down in Oakdale, of a worship place.
Somewhat similar, yeah. A little different.
Worship place there. It was supposed to be a instructional place for, for that religion to teach youth about their religion and those kind of things. And we said no to that. It wasn't a conditional use permit, it was an interim use permit.
The application was withdrawn. So the application never became before the council. It only went to Planning Ca- Planning Commission. It was for an interim home, home occupation.
So I can't compare it to that.
No, it's, the issue with that one became that he wasn't living at the property and so that's when that, and so we told them they'd have to come back as a place of worship and they chose not to proceed under that. So that is not.
Thanks. I'm sorry I brought that up. Sorry, misunderstood that. I just, with everything that's going on and such and out of respect for both, the, the, the Haven Temple folks and the neighbors and such, I cannot support this and it's related to just the differences of between of what we expect out of a worship service or a worship place. And we've got many of them. We've got all of the churches around here and many of them have called me and spoke about the hoops they've had to drum, jump through to get what they've gotten and to just flip these two buildings and to step through this doesn't seem like it is the right approach to this. So if I've been confusing, I'm sorry, but I'm pretty transparent when I, when I'm thinking about stuff. So Natalie, correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, I just wanted to clarify a couple of points just to potentially clear up any confusion. So just to be clear, the, most of the churches, and I, I don't know the timing of Hope Community Church, but many of our churches that have been established in the city were built when they were, would have been considered rural residential and they were not within the Musa.
I understand that.
So that's, that's.
But the expectations were.
I don't know that there were a lot of expectations. I think that they kind of policed themselves and they had their architecture because of, of their own wanting.
I understand.
And so I don't know that there was a lot of city expectations that were put on those architectural standards.
Again, it's, again, it's hearsay. It's them telling me there was a lot more expected from the city.
Yeah, but I would say we can, we can talk about architectural building materials. If that's a concern that we feel like this architect, it doesn't fit, we could certainly talk about those part of the CUP to have it.
And again, my other issues are related to safety, intersection issues, overall screening, burms.
Yep, and we could add burms as a condition of approval too. Or we could add also a fence around the parking lot or around, I would say not around the entire property because of my understanding is the farmer to the south is farming it. So we probably wouldn't want to farm on the south, but there could potentially be a farm to screen, not farm. Fence to screen the parking lot.
But nothing related about the runoff?
Well, that, okay, so let me go through your points I have. Oh, I wrote everything as you were talking. So as far as the runoff, Steve, are you able to speak to that? Because that was evaluated as part of the application.
So the stormwater rules in Corcoran, the watershed are an acre of disturbance is the threshold. So with what they're proposing, they're under the requirements to trigger our stormwater thresholds.
And then.
Can I follow up on that real quick?
Sure.
Where would the runoff go from the parking lot? Is that going to flow to the south or is it going to flow to the north and along the ditch?
It'll flow to the east where it's already wet at the point of.
On their own property.
The far east. It's on their own property, but it's also migrated into the property owners to the east of them too. And then down into the ditch.
To what council members saying, I think it's high, so it just kind of sheds all around. I don't think it's one distinct direction.
Okay.
So then as far, as far as the whole eco-farm discussion, they heard loud and clear from the council that that was too confusing to have both an eco-farming component and their religious component. Farming is a permitted use. I don't believe that we really can say they can't farm it. But in respect to the conversation and feedback they heard at the, from the council, they removed that use. At this point, they are planning to use the space as a temple and the farmer to the south will continue farming their, the part that is farming. So I, and they can speak to that as well, but that's my understanding is they heard you loud and clear and they no longer are including that component as part of their practice. As far as the house, it is normal for churches to have a house as an accessory use. It is customary. It, we have, St. Thomas just recently got rid of a house that had been there for, I think, decades. But, and then we have other examples of churches that have a house on the property. So that's, that's what we're comparing this to is the temple is in the pole barn and they will be having the house as an accessory use. They plan to use it primarily for office space, some staging for food, but it could be used as a residence as well if one of their congregation members, one of their church, or no, sorry, their religious leaders would like to live in, they could certainly do that. So I think those are just a couple of things I wanted to clarify. As far as the, there was a traffic study done. The city has to be very careful about developing a nexus for any road improvements. Ten to twelve cars on a regular basis does not trigger a nexus for the types of improvements that you're talking about. Additionally, the, in the last ten years, there was one accident at this intersection that was reported to the state of Minnesota and it had nothing to do with the sightlines. It was an illegal U-turn from the sounds of it, so it was a user error. And I believe that was part of the packet.
Yeah, that was, that was included as an additional item within the packet and I have, have the data pulled up on the screen if Dad wants to switch it over. But this is, this is the report from the, from MinDOT discussing about the, the crash that occurred a couple of years ago. And this chart, and it's kind of hard to see, shows the number of accidents dating back to twenty fifteen. And according to their data, there's been one accident at that intersection.
And I think the last part was just the, the potential for the parking lot to accommodate all of their parking. Again, ten to twelve cars is what's anticipated for the regular use. Most days it's just going to be one or two people, so it'd be one to two cars. And then as far as the larger events, in addition to the twenty-one cars, twenty-one spaces they have in the parking lot, they also still have the driveway for the house. So there is more spaces to park. And then, you know, worst case scenario, overflow parking would still be anticipated to go on the site. So that might mean that there's a car that's parked on the grass for a couple hours. But the reality is, is there, there is expected to be families that are coming in cars, so it's not expected that there would be seventy-five cars. And I don't think we'd want to require them to have a seventy-five car parking lot, which would be the alternative.
Can I ask a follow-up question, Natalie?
Yeah.
Good recap, by the way. Several of the residents in their emails spoke about having heard services over the past year or so. Um, several of the residents in their emails spoke about having heard services over the past year or so. Do we know what that sound would have been like? Is this like an amplified sound situation? Is it bells? Is it preaching? Is it meditation? Like what is the impact on the surrounding environment when services are happening?
Um, yeah, as far as the, the, the services that may have been held, I, I don't believe the applicant said that there are, have been services. I believe they've maybe been at the property. They have had to do maintenance on the property and they have had to, um, work with architects to figure out how to get this building up to code for it to be, uh, something that can be used as a place of worship. Um, go ahead.
I, I haven't shown you representative, but I was going to ask the manager, you all, to speak to that. Is there a question?
Sure.
So, respected council members and members, uh, my name is Kirti Arduan and I live on six zero three five Lingwood Lane in Plymouth. And, uh, I'm here to present, uh, the application, uh, application. So I just want to talk about this thing, uh, that we use. So what I want to talk about is that, uh, it is our custom, the culture that we sing hymns before we start any work. So even when we have the meetings or other things that we talked about in the house, uh, that's what we had, uh, the, uh, song that is we are talking about.
And can you just, have you had services at the, uh, in the barn or the house?
No, barn, we did not have any services over there. We mostly met for, uh, like I talked to, uh, staff members multiple, multiple times. And we had meetings on site with architects, engineers, septic designers, and we had multiple architects. The only reason that we took so much of time is to address all the possible concerns that the, uh, neighbors could have. And we were very serious about keeping the rural character of the house and the property. And because of that, we had multiple meetings and we had multiple talks over there. And we had to update the congregation to discuss of all the options, because many things were discussed in that, that hey, can we use the house? Can we make the changes in the house and use it or can we have, and this is all the discussions we had with the city staff also. But this was the solution that we came up, which took almost a year, uh, to figure it out all those things, to consider the all neighborhood needs and the rural character, keep the rural character of those things. Uh, as far as the lights are concerned, uh, my architect, our architect was under the impression that the light was needed. If it is not needed, then absolutely we can take that, uh, from the proposal.
Kirti, could you clarify, would you, would there be a need ever for amplified sound, either in your annual service or during a festival? Okay, no amplified sound? And then is there any other, like, do you, do you, I, I don't mean to be disrespectful. Is there like a gong or anything that would ever, like?
Also need.
Like any other scary noises?
Yeah, like instruments would be there.
Okay, okay.
Inside, outside?
Inside, yes, all of them will be inside.
Okay.
Everything. And, and the one thing that I wanted to talk about is the pole barn modifications that we have proposed. Uh, we are proposing the insulation, uh, which would, uh, deepen the sound and which would, if anything, uh, that comes out of the pole barn. And another thing that, uh, I was, uh, looking at it was the, uh, the, uh. Just one second. I wanted to talk about the inverse square law. What it does is that from the source of the sound, if you move double the distance, then the noise reduced by six decibel. So for example, if I am, I just from the source, if I'm hearing the sound and if I move ten, from ten meter to twenty meter, then it would reduce by six decibel. If I further go forty meters, then it will reduce sixteen deci, uh, twelve decibel from six to two double. And then eighty, the eighty meter would be eighteen decibel. And the nearest neighbor that we had is hundred and seventy meters, which is five fifty feet from the pole barn. So that itself will reduce the noise, if any, coming out of the pole barn by twenty-four decibel. And this we are talking about it when it is done on an open field, which is not the case. For example, if the bell is there, the church bell is there, which is the open field use, which we are not proposing, which we are not doing anything outside of the pole barn. So we already have the insulated pole barn out of that. If there is any noise that is coming out, that will further reduce by twenty-four decibel to our nearest neighbor. So that's all I would like to talk about.
Any other questions for the applicant, Mark, up?
Have you had any concerns from, uh, your existing sites?
So we have been, uh, using, uh, Chantilly, uh, we have been using for more than five years. For three years, we have used the Peace Lutheran Church in Plymouth. And, uh, it was a sad news for all of us that it closed. And since then, we started looking for the new place, permanent place for our congregation, our group. And since we purchased the property, we have been using in, uh, Visera High School. We have been using in St. Barbara's Church in Plymouth. We have been renting the place in Hamel Community. We have been renting the place in Hopkins Pavilion. And we have never heard, uh, sound complaint or the noise complaint from any of those places.
And then I, I just want to also clarify for the record, um, to my knowledge, police and co-enforcement have not received any kind of a formal, uh, code complaint regarding noise or services being held at the property, um, since they have purchased, acquired the property. So we haven't, nothing that we could follow up on. There had, there was something stated in the letters we received as part of the public hearing, but nothing that was ever submitted, whereas other uses that we've had that were operating without approvals, we did receive complaints and that's how it came about. The applicant, uh, has tried to go through the proper process before starting any services, so.
Quick question, separate topic, um, for the, the special events, um, and this isn't necessarily a, something we could, um, probably legislate or not, but just out of curiosity, are they typically on a certain holiday or a certain event? Or are, would those be the more random in terms of the four events?
Yes, so it is, uh, a little bit random.
Okay.
That, but it varies few days here and there. Uh, it is based on certain calculations and other things that it is.
It's kind of like East, how Easter's set up.
Gotcha, okay, so like floating.
Yeah, so it's, it's their major holidays, but they aren't set on a specific day, yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Natalie or Dwight, do we, uh, do we know of any commercial use? Are they selling produce or anything like that?
No, they take them, they, they, at one point they were talking about a community farm.
I thought you said that, yeah, thank you.
Um, and the, and as part of that, they were talking about providing, not necessarily selling the food, but providing the food to, um, can't remember exactly what the plan was, but they have not included as part of their current proposal. Go ahead, sorry. Did you want to speak to that at all? Okay. Answer the question about the sound, because we did, I did talk to someone at the city about a complaint and we have.
Come on.
At our house.
Uh, we have to keep, we have to keep that kind of back and forth chatter to a minimum, but if you'd like to come up briefly and.
Uh, Sarah Harvey, eighty-eight fifty Trampi Road. Um, so just to clarify, we have heard, um, some gatherings going on and it's been like music and like a, I don't know if it's a gong or a cymbal or something like that. Um, and my assumption is the house is insulated. So we have heard that across ten to the north through all of the pine trees. So that's why we're concerned about the sound of the lights. We've also had numerous lights after ten o'clock at night shining directly into our bedroom window from cars coming and going. Um, so there have been gatherings, there has been noise and I have talked to somebody in the city about it, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Dwight, could you go back to what the, uh, proposed hours of operation?
Sure. Yes, um, let me just go back to that slide here. So in the applicant's narrative, they're, um, expecting services between seven AM and four PM on Saturdays and Sundays. Uh, and then every day throughout the week, uh, there would be two people, typically two people who would come to the site at, uh, around five AM to seven AM. Um, and then again, uh, sometime between six PM and eight PM.
And then during the, in between there, no one?
Right.
No, I think the applicant can speak to that. It's part of a ceremony that they do, um, daily ceremony.
Yeah, it is, uh, it is like I, um, five AM to seven AM. On the weekdays, it's one or two person over there. It's a ceremony that we do if you have a proper culture over there. Uh, so that's why we have to observe that in the same, uh, ceremony that we do at six PM.
So it'd be maybe one or two people coming in in the morning, leaving, and one or two coming in at the evening.
Is that indoor or outdoor?
Indoor.
Okay. Gotcha, thank you. Um, any other questions for the applicant or staff?
I feel like it's been a good discussion so far. Um, I want to agree with something I heard Dean say around this being very different than the zone for the Hindu temple in that it, it is in the rural zone. There's no city sewer and water available, so it physically can't grow beyond what a septic system can support. Um, so for, for neighbors who are concerned about what could this develop into, until and unless the city decides to expand the MUSA this far west, it's going to be highly constrained by the physical limitations of the site. Uh, that also means that we're not going to see a lot of housing springing up around it because we don't have building rights in abundance in that part of the city either. So it, it will be what it is approved to be and it sounds like we will have, uh, a number of controls around parking lot size and seating capacity as well that would have to get adjusted if there were to be any growth. So to me, that helps to mitigate some of the concerns that I would have if I was a neighbor. I feel like the number of car trips doesn't really have a serious impact on road safety. Those roads are over traveled anyway. I do want to consider a couple of conditions to deal with some of the other impacts that I think are more, um, likely to be significant. I thought the, the exterior light removal would be a good consideration, whether that needs to be a condition or it's just something that can be done. It is a, a rural area. People like it dark. They like it quiet. So to the way that we can work to protect that, uh, we should try to do that. I think the suggestion of a parking lot fence might be another worthy consideration. I'm not sure how high that would be or what type of materials would be appropriate, but to mitigate the light shining off the property into people's residences, I think would be helpful. I think it would also be good to consider, I know we're, we're being told for now, all the instruments, uh, are only inside and we're not going to have amplified sound. That might be another condition, just considering the noise impact on the neighbors with the early start times that we're seeing in the hours of operation.
Couple clarifying points for you, um, for the exterior light removal. I think there may be some desire from public safety to have at least some light for the parking lot because it allows them to easily see things, uh, if there were to not necessarily be anything on the applicant's control, but if something were to be incorrectly located in the parking lot in the middle of the night. Um, would, we could certainly remove some of the lights, but would one light or so, so that there is some parking lot light, would that be a, a real point? I mean, I'm not trying to speak on behalf of public safety, but.
I think being able during, uh, some of the hours of operation would be helpful for people coming and going safely traversing across the parking lot. I think there would be, there's probably some reasonableness to, you know, for safe ingress and egress of people that are there. Now, it's different if it's the middle of the night and there's nobody on premise, um, in that location with that small of a, um, you know, use. I, I don't know that it would necessarily be a requirement from the public safety end.
Maybe like a motion activated?
Oh, yeah, something like that.
Or a timer?
Yeah, something similar to what you'd have in a house.
Okay. Um, but we could, they could certainly reduce the lights and, and try to make it a bit more strategic and then have those be set on a timer or a motion activated. I think that that could be something that we could work through with them. Uh, parking lot fence, if the concern is screening headlights, I would say the parking lot should be about four feet tall. Um, uh, we technically require shrubs at about three to four feet to, uh, screen headlights, so I think that that would be, go ahead.
Can I speak to that point? The, um, I think it's important to note that the, the only times when those ten to twelve cars will be at the site are during the day. So the, the other, in the evening, that would be one or two cars. And so I think, you know, if we're talking about the rural character, the neighborhood, I think putting sort of a fence in the middle of the field would, would sort of be more disruptive than any headlights would be since no one, no one's going to be there. The other potential, uh, we, we've talked about, uh, the possibility of a, a gravel driveway that's more consistent with the rural character instead of a, a, a asphalt or, or cement. Um, and that's something that, that we prefer, but city code requires a paved driveway. So to the extent, um, that's something the council would consider and would think would be more consistent with rural character.
I don't know, that's something that we can consider on the fly here. If it was, I think it'd have to be a bigger law.
Come through, a follow-up with the variance request as to that, if that's, obviously we hopefully get guidance from the council on whether that's something that's appropriate. I think the other thing that's important to note is that, that the applicant's done, uh, a, a lot to think about this rural character issue. And currently, that property has a house and a pole barn and, and when this is done, it's going to have a house and a pole barn. The pole barn on that property, even as, as minimally expanded, uh, I think we're going to have seven hundred square feet, that's significantly smaller than pole barns that are directly across the street. And, and if you look at the parking, I don't know if you can, uh, put up the, uh, area photo. But there are both parking areas and pole barns that are significantly larger than the pole barn would be on this property. So, and, and part of the reason why the materials are what they will be in the final pole barn are to make the house continue to look like a house in a pole barn in a rural area. And I think that's, I think important to note. So that white building, uh, directly across the street and then the gray roofed building, all of those are significantly larger, uh, from a, a s- a square footage perspect- perspective than the, even the expanded pole barn. So, you know, we're not changing the rural character, uh, and so we're doing everything we can to, uh, to avoid that.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else? Um, Natalie, question, there was, I believe, some conversation at the end of the planning commission about, um, property maintenance ordinance and implementing that. Was that implemented into the draft?
Yep, so theoretically, uh, every property in the city has to comply with chapter eighty-seven, our property maintenance code. But as a condition of the CUP, they have to remain in compliance. Both, both structures would have to remain in compliance. And that was to address concerns that they might not be investing in the house and that's no longer the principal structure.
Yep.
Um, so that is in the current draft, um, and then, um.
I did have a follow-up actually.
Okay.
If, I don't know where cap, council, um, sits on the fence idea. I, I was kind of thinking the same thing. Maybe perhaps applicant is not, um, how would you feel about berm? Some berming instead of fencing in addition to landscaping?
I, I always love berms, but I think it's more expensive than a fence. So if there's resistance to a fence, I imagine it'll be greater for a berm.
Potentially. If you'd like to speak.
Yeah, so as part of the, uh, design, we had to put another septic system. And that septic system, we had strategically put it so that it will hide the parking lot. So that, uh, you know, like, berm type of structure that we would have would hide the parking lot. And that's one of the considerations we had when we designed.
Gotcha. Thank you. Um, and then the other item that I had of potential mitigation was maybe a smaller, we've done this on some other, uh, projects, but, um, a smaller requirement of mature plantings, like ten percent mature planting at six feet. Or, you know, the numbers could be changed.
So can we, just, you know, there are some, there are existing.
Existing ones, yep.
Yeah, and then, um, we've had a, a really difficult time keeping the plants alive or the trees alive that are, um, too much, yeah, that are already mature when they do that transplant, so, um.
How about like a, uh, if it was a lower, a younger?
Yeah, I think if we wanted to, I think for overstory, we require, apparently close to the actual landscaping. For overstory trees, we, uh, for shade overstory trees, we require two fi- point five inch diameter. I think, uh, working with Fairway Shores, they said that they were able to find three inch diameter. Uh, and we had said that that was, um, um, that, that was a PUD benefit for them to move forward with that. I think that could potentially, uh, be, uh, a request that at least half or whatever percentage you identify of the new plantings be at least three inch diameter for the deciduous trees. And then evergreen, evergreen trees, we want at least four feet hi- high, so I think we could say we'd want that to be five feet high. And I think those heights are a bit easier to transplant than some more mature trees.
Okay, so yeah, like, what does council think of those numbers that Natalie suggested, the three inch and the five foot for those type of trees at, I don't know, um, twenty-five, thirty percent of the new plantings or something?
Are those? Are those easier to keep alive, Natalie?
I think we're gonna have an easier time keeping those alive. I haven't, Fairway Shores hasn't gone yet, but those are the heights that they have proposed as a PUD benefit. So, and that was kind of working with what's available, and then also just kinda keeping in mind that you, there's a sweet spot to transplant in terms of the height, so.
What about allowing an either or with parking lot fence or the enhanced planting sizes? They can negotiate that with staff?
Yeah.
Go ahead, if you have facts, go ahead.
So I agree with Natalie about the planting of the mature, little bit overgrown trees. I myself, I live on the Chankada Road and close to Wixburg. And I planted almost, probably I would say forty plus trees, and thirty percent died, thirty percent did not survive. I thought that I would get the right away, the screening and everything from the roads, but it didn't help. So I'm certainly happy to accommodate, group will be happy to add. But in case if, you know, expert comes and say that that has the less chances of surviving, then I would like city to consider that also. And also, we would be happy to add more shrubs, or we would be happy to add more other trees in case if that would help. Far as the concerns, I think that would be considered.
Jeremy, making some along lines of that flexibility would be the right idea then? If it's not feasible one way, then it gives another option or third option.
I mean, maybe the third option is another row of shrubs outside of the primary.
I was gonna suggest that if an alternative of either larger or more, a higher number, if that's always better and provides, you know, a similar amount of additional screening.
So you think we can get some in that would kind of encompass the flexibility there?
Yeah, we could, we could certainly add that as a condition. So what I'm hearing, just for the record, is we would want to add a condition that the parking lot have either an additional row of shrubs, a fence, or at least thirty percent of the plantings be in excess of the minimum height limits to be identified by staff.
I'll make that motion to amend the resolution.
Do you have a second? I'll second it. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 opposed?
Nay.
Four one?
I'm abstaining.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, no, I was just thinking, it's okay.
Three, one, one. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I just want, if I could, I just wanted to, in terms of some of the other comments we've heard, we could add a condition to maintain compliance with MPCA noise standards. And we could also add a condition of providing reasonable access to city staff to inspect for compliance periodically.
I would like both of those, yeah.
Can I make one comment?
Yes.
I'm just, I'm thinking about the rural residential aspect of it, and I realize that we have to be cognizant of safety in parking lots. But I feel like because they're moving into a rural residential, we should limit the lighting as much as we possibly can.
Oh, yes, yes, so we, I'm sorry, I think we just forgot to vote on that aspect too, so yeah, I think that was what I was hearing as well.
Yeah.
So, reduce the lighting and then have that be on a ti, what lighting is there, be strategic, on a timer or motion based?
On a timer or motion based, and then maybe final, maybe some language to final approval from public safety. Just, just to make sure that if it was all said and done, and then all of a sudden, oh, this is a public safety issue, then they can pop away then.
Okay, yep, I think we could do that.
But like, if it's a public safety issue, should it even be there then? That's my question.
Well, I'm saying like, if just the, like, the pitch blackness of it is in one light.
But it shouldn't be an issue if we're only having two people there.
What he was saying was the cars leaving, there might be some need to have just a little bit of lighting for, as the cars are leaving the site. And that's why I'm thinking it could be something that's on a timer because it would be necessary.
I'm thinking something similar to like, what you wanna have in the back of your house.
Right, yeah, that's what I'm thinking too, but we weren't really specific. So I just wanted to make sure that we're limiting that because it is rural residential.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think, I think a motion can be made to add the MPCA compliance, the city staff to, reasonable access for city staff to inspect for compliance periodically, and then reduce the lights shown on the building to what is necessary and have it be comparable to a residential exterior light that's on a timer or end or motion based system.
How do I speak to the city staff or monitoring or coming on site? I guess all we would ask is that whatever is done with respect to a congregation that's limited to thirty-five attendees will be done for all places of worship or assembly uses in the city so that we're not singling this in a very small congregation out and we're ensuring that churches where hundreds of people attend are held at the same standard now. I don't know whether that's necessary at all, given that, you know, there's a limitation that's clear. But we don't wanna be singled out due to inspections or reporting monitoring or something.
I think that's entirely fair, I hear what you're saying. At the, at this point, what I would say, it would be simply just to confirm the attendance. And I, and I would imagine, just due to staff capacity, it'd be based off of a complaint that comes in saying that they're exceeding their attendance limit, so.
And again, like, how much, that would be the same with inspection.
Yep, if, yeah, if we got one for a different one, it's maybe slightly different situation in that the size and scale where, you know, St. Thomas might not be up to their maximum number.
It might be a fire marshal complaint.
But yeah, if they got a complaint, just the same, we would, we would certainly want that to be a similar process, the same process for all.
Yeah, I think if we were to ever have an event center where they would have a minimum amount of people, or a maximum amount of people stipulated in their permit, we would probably, we would have a similar desire to confirm that they're not exceeding that limit.
Yep.
Do, do most places of worship have a CUP? I suppose it depends on where they're located.
In Corcoran, they do.
Well, and so, most of our, or I think all of our churches are right now in the PI district because they, during our last, I believe it was the last con plan, it was just determined that they should be rezoned to public institutions. So right now, they don't have a CUP aspect because it's a permitted use in that district, but they didn't start out that way. And so I would say the, but any new churches coming in would, rural residential or in urban residential, they would all be subject to a CUP, yes.
So Natalie, could you restate what you have for that additional motion?
Maintain compliance with MPCA noise standards, provide reasonable access to city staff to inspect for compliance periodically. We could even change that based, if complaints are received. And then, removal of lights to what is necessary for the site to function. Lights must be on either a timer and or motion based system, yes.
Anything else that, talk about that?
I'm, I'm still not in favor, but that, that's me. But the question I have is the conditional use permit. Once it's granted for this property, it stays with this property until whenever.
Well, until someone either changes the use or.
But the use could be anything, being that we grant a conditional use for this property.
Only this use.
Only this.
Only this use, so if they were to, anything that comes in, that would exceed, yeah, we would have to either do a CUP amendment. So, but yes, CUP, and then they also have to.
I didn't understand it that way in the planning commission, it wasn't, it wasn't spoken like that, so.
They also have to remain in compliance with their standards, so technically, if they were not to comply with the conditions of approval, there is a revocation process. So the, so it, but to your point, when you grant a CUP, as long as they're operating within what was approved for that CUP, they can continue operating indefinitely, yes.
Yeah, I think what you may be getting confused with is it does run with the land, so if they sold it to someone to do the exact same use, it would continue, but if they sold it to someone to do something different, or they outgrew it, or someone else outgrew it, then it would not.
Why wouldn't you do an interim use permit then?
The city decided to do a conditional use permit for places of worship, that's what's currently, yeah. So interim use permits, they do sunset. We, at this time, that's just not simply how we have it. Churches have a lot of investment typically required with bringing things up to code. So an IUP, we're running into that even with event centers, where the people just aren't willing to make that kind of investment. It was something that could sunset every, potentially every three years, so.
Potentially someone will look at it in a bigger code update though.
Is there, I just have a question, I'm kind of on the same page as council member Baron Camp in that I feel like we're circumventing our code to make something work because we're changing the main structure to an accessory structure and we're creating a structure. And I know that that's what you said, many churches have those. But I'm just wondering if there's something that we need to be more specific in our code or if this would still happen even if we had something that said, your, your, your living structure is your main structure and your accessory structure is something else, it's.
So a place of worship though, so if you, the pole barn is a temple and that's gonna be their primary use now, that's the primary, is what the CUP would be granting. So it's really how the site functions.
It's different than, yes, just swapping and saying, you couldn't live out of that pole barn shed without it being.
But they can live out of their new pole barn, which is the house.
No, they couldn't live out of it, they, it's the primary use, but they couldn't live out of it, correct?
Correct, it's, yeah, that's not, yeah, it's, would be brought up to code to allow for a place of worship, place of assembly, it's not brought up for residential.
But we, we just said that if somebody decided to move into the house.
The house. Correct.
Then they're gonna live in the accessory structure.
No, so I'm, we're talking about how this site functions, so we're saying that the pole barn, the temple, that is not a residence, that's not something they could live out of. The house on the site would be their accessory use, and that could potentially be where someone would reside if someone were to live on the property, yes.
Could we make it a condition that someone does live on the property?
I don't believe so, no. That, I, what we did condition was that they have to continue investing in the home and to comply with our property maintenance codes.
The other thing I wanted to confirm is there's gonna be two septic systems then? One for the pole barn, and, excuse me, one for the temple and one for the home? The other thing that, again, it just doesn't smell right, whatever, I don't know how to say it. We're talking now offices in the accessory structure, which is the home.
Well, just, yeah, being able to.
There were comments at the planning commission that they still wanna use the home to prepare food and those kind of things.
Stage it, so they're not gonna be preparing food, that's be where they would bring.
How do we monitor that? I, I just, it's just, it's opening so many cans of worms on, in my mind that, I mean, we do, we do stuff, we do stuff for residences, what do we call it, mother-in-law apartments in pole sheds and such. We put more restrictions on these kind of things than we're doing on, on something like this, it just, it just doesn't seem right.
Well, if they wanted to live out of it, then they'd have to do the same thing.
I guess my question is, if we look at other churches in the site that have a house on premises for their religious leader, are we concerned with that? Is that a concern, do we, would we want to prohibit that?
Give me an example, Natalie.
St. John's?
We've got St. John's where the, the church is there, the, the, the house is there,
and there's a house there.
but the church is going away and they're keeping two properties. When the, when the new church goes in, the old church comes down, the residents are still staying there, but it's on two different properties.
It's one site though, it's all, it's one site, and the, you can tell because of the fact that the parking lot goes over to the other site. So it's one site, and I don't know if you can pull it up, but I, that's just my concern. You're saying, are we okay with them having a residence on their property as an accessory use to the church? Or are we saying that that would be something that we don't want to see?
Do you have a response in?
Michelle, I'd like to hear.
Well, I was just gonna, I'm trying to understand like the difference between how they're set up on, on different church, places of worship. So like, with St. John's or St. Thomas, those are separate plots, right? The, the, the temple or the place of worship is separate from, from the house?
I don't believe so, the, the house, um.
Cause I thought St. Thomas had three separate flats.
St. Thomas has a, looks like a house that is on the same property as the cemetery in the existing church. And then St. John's, I believe, also, the, the house is on the same.
This is, this is St. John's here, yeah, as you can see, I mean, the, the blue outline is the outline of the parcel. Where my mouse is right now is where the church is, and then just south of it is where the house is located, it's on the same parcel. So it's kind of a similar situation in that aspect.
Yeah, thank you.
Going back to Natalie, those items, could you list that one more time?
Yes, maintain compliance with MPCA noise standards, provide reasonable access to city staff to inspect the temple for compliance if complaints are received. Limit the lights on the building to what is necessary for the site to function, lights must be on a timer or motion based sensor. And, I believe, those were the three that we were going through.
I'll make that motion to amend the resolution to include that.
I think we had a motion and a second, if not, I'll second.
Did we?
I think we added the lighting, so it would be a friendly amendment maybe?
Okay, to include the lighting, okay.
Friendly, I'm proud of it being a friendly amendment, if everyone else is, whoever wants to sec, we have a second.
I volunteered to second, I second.
Everyone cool with that? Okay, motion second, nipples, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Three, two that passes?
That's with amendment, right?
Yes, that was the, another amendment to the resolution. Anything else? I think we've added some substantial mitigation tools. If not, someone wanna take a crack at a motion? See a few wheels turn in, so.
I have one more question.
Sure.
How, how are we gonna mitigate the parking lot again, like the salt that is put on the, the parking lot for the, for the winter months and the runoff piece?
We could ask them for, so in our northeast district, we ask all new commercial and industrial, or, yeah, even multifamily uses to provide a, oh, Steve, what is it?
Chloride mitigation plan.
So we could ask them to submit to chlorine mitigation plan.
Would that need to be in the resolution, or?
Yep, we would wanna add that.
Okay.
Wanna add that, make a motion to add that?
I mean, I think that's important, that's our wetlands and, and if there's a field that's being planted or farmed, I think that's important.
If you have some now.
I guess I do have a concern about the enforcement piece because we're putting the responsibility on the neighbors for enforcement then? Because it's complaint based.
If you would prefer, we could do a yearly compliance check.
It can be both.
Yep, it could be both, that's true.
I guess I'd be feel better if it was both, that seems more fair to me if I was a resident that was living there and I had to call each time I heard something that was outside of the hours or not following what we're, what we're setting in place.
Keep those two items in mind, if you wanna speak.
I would just speak to that in that, does the city do that for every use of ten to twelve cars or larger? Does it, does it inspect it annually? And I don't, I don't think the city does, and I think that there's a concern that, that uses with much higher intensity are not being inspected by the state. So, and I don't know if city staff has the capacity to come and take that across the city, but it would have to be undertaken across the city for it to be not totally citywide.
Are there other CUPs in the rural area of a similar intensity?
I can't think of anything off the top of my head, we do have IUPs for home occupations and they go through inspection every three years. So we could face it off of that.
And complaint based is, I mean, we do that on whatever, based on complaints.
Yeah.
That's our uniform standard for everything, really, I mean. And we, we came to that out of realization that people didn't like having city staff driving around looking for problems.
Yeah.
So maybe if we did it complaint based or to make it a uniform thing, same as the IUP standard?
Every three years, or once every three years?
Or, when a complaint is received, would that work?
Yeah, if we're staying with an illegal boundaries then.
Do you wanna make a motion to amend those two in?
Sure, I'll make a motion to include those two additional amendments.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed?
Aye, nay.
Okay, four one, passes, all right. So we have a pretty heavily amended resolution. Okay. Four of one. Passes. All right. So we have a pretty heavily amended resolution. Uh, listed some, I think, strong mitigation items in there. Does anyone wanna take a crack at a motion?
I'll make a motion to.
If I can just say one more thing, please. Again, if this was a worship group, a religion, a lit, religious group coming and asking to build a church at that corner, I would not, I could not stand in the way because it would be identified it as a use in the rural residential and all of those things. To do what we're doing here, um, a number of the neighbors have talked to me and have stated at the podium that this is just opening us up for a whole bunch of interpretation to our ordinances and everything else. And it just, it just doesn't seem right. If, if this group were to come to us and, and be doing exactly what I'm saying, I'd be the first one to stand up and say yes, cause I have supported the temple in Maple Grove. And again, the BAPS folks down in Medina and that group and stuff, but that's literally building a temple, literally building a worship place and such. This is, in my mind, just a way out that just doesn't seem right, folks. I, that's what I feel. So, thanks for letting me say something.
Um, can I, oh, go ahead.
Mark, press the menu.
Dwight, uh, hours of operation again? Could you pull that slide up for me?
Yes.
So, you know, I see seven AM, five AM. During those times, do we anticipate instruments or chanting or?
Um, the applicant can speak to that, but to my understanding, the weekday services are fairly quiet. Um, I don't think there's any, um, instruments or music involved in that. Um, the weekend services, I, I do believe that there is some, some songs.
To that.
But, um, the applicant could probably speak to that better than I could.
To that point too, Mark. Mr. Mayor, if I may, I thought worship services were identified seven AM to eleven thirty and this is open all day Saturday and Sunday.
We thought they were to eleven thirty. Where?
On the weekend services, it says seven AM to four PM. I thought, I've been hearing, correct me if I'm wrong, seven AM to eleven thirty AM were the Saturday, Sunday services. Why are we open all day? Again, back to the respect of the neighbors and the rural setting and such. That can change the aspects around this area.
Do you know where you saw the, I'm not familiar with that.
Maybe, maybe the applicant can speak to the service time, cause I, I believe the, um, I don't wanna speak for them. I think there's like, there's a main service and then they're expected to kind of peter out until four o'clock, but.
And if I could get an answer to my question.
Yeah.
Also.
Could you read right?
Yeah, my, my question is, I see, um, weekend services, seven AM, weekday services, five AM. When, uh, when do the instruments and the, and the, the chantings begin?
So the instrument and chanting would be inside the pole barn.
I understand that, but at what time?
So it would be, uh, roughly around the same time.
Okay.
Uh, but we will follow all the noise ordinance that city has already in place.
Okay.
Same time on the, on both the weekend and weekday, or?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so, so chanting and instruments can be anticipated, seven AM during the weekend and five AM during the weekday?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Presumably, yeah.
Do you expect that those will be heard, no, by the neighbors?
If it's two people.
Two people, yes, for the weekend.
Right.
And the, uh, as the applicant had said, the, the temple would have to be further insulated than what is currently the pole barn standard because it just took to comply with building code, so that will reduce some of the sound as well. And the nearest house is, uh, over a hundred yards, you said, away from the building, so the sound will decrease several times over. So the standard that they must complain, must comply with the MPCA noise standards, um, I, that would be very achievable even with chanting and some play instrumentation within the pole barn.
Plus the screening and.
And the screening would also dampen some of that as well.
Okay.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Um, just of our city attorney, is, are we setting a precedent by allowing the CUP for future other entities that may wanna do the same thing?
Mayor and council, I, I, no, uh, the, the code allows for this as a permitted use with conditions. So, um, having them comply with existing standards would be what your code calls for.
Okay.
Anything else? Otherwise, Jeremy, were you gonna?
Yeah, I was looking for the number. One second.
Um, Michelle phoned the information related to the hours of services in the letter addressed to us, um, March fifth, that services were from seven AM to eleven AM, where we anticipate our attendance to continue to be around twenty-five worshippers.
Yeah, the planning commission, the applicant had said that the main time on the weekends would be till about eleven AM, where the, that's where the twenty-five people are anticipated there and then, but there would still be people at the site until about four o'clock.
Is that accurate?
Yes.
And, and again, I'm, I'm speaking for the neighbors and such of the rural side of our, our life out there and stuff will and can be changed with this if it goes outside the, the, the temple area. It's just, it's, I can't say anymore.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-five as amended.
Do we have a second? All right, we'll second. Further discussion? Nothing? Discuss a little. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, um, so that fails. Does someone want to make a motion? Um, can the other?
I'll make a motion for to dial a conditional use permit on site land for the New My Haven Temple related to, um, public safety, um, I'm, I wasn't prepared, I guess. Public safety, the change in the rural atmosphere out here, um, to the existing neighbors and such. Um, if, are those are two things I can recommend them dial on?
Okay, do we need more?
Do I need more?
It would, it would be helpful if we had, uh, some, some, um, reference to some data points, um.
Visually being out there, uh, the close calls, everything else, it just, Jeremy said it best was, we're already overpopulating.
Direct staff to come back with?
Well, I think we have, we have the, the basis of a denial resolution in front of you, so I think I just would add to that. I don't, I don't.
Wasn't there a variance too? Something with a variance that they needed to adjust? There was?
Nope, there's no variance.
I'm sorry, not a variance, a setback. Something with a ten-foot, something was not accurate with one of the buildings, one of the accessory. It was an email that we just recently got.
Sidewalk height?
Oh, yeah, that was the sidewall height for the, for that house.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, we typically have not denied one of those since I got here, so I would say we'd focus on the place of worship. Um, okay, really, the close call and sight lines. I don't, uh, do you have thoughts on bringing it back versus what we've prepared?
Mayor, if I may, um, yeah, Mayor and Council, I think if you're going to make, um, you're gonna give direction as far as a denial, the, the, in addition to providing the basis and findings reasoning for that, for that conclusion, um, the, the second level that you should also address is, um, if you find that reasonable conditions cannot be placed to mitigate the concerns you have and why. So it's, what is the concern and why can't it be mitigated? The two levels you should cover in direct staff, what you want to capture.
I can't just use it, don't, just don't smell right, huh?
No, not a finding of fact.
I would say, uh, sound, which is one of my concerns. Sound, uh, at seven AM and five AM, my guess is the neighborhood is quiet and I believe that the, the sound is gonna travel. And, uh, I don't think that with the way this is written now, with the proposal a, as it is, I don't, I, I don't see that being mitigated. So, my, I'm, I'm voting no because of the sound and because of the time of day.
Mayor, if I may, um, just Councilor Landman, uh, is there a means by which you could mitigate that concern by either restriction of hours or reference to what we, we talked about, uh, MPCA standards, both? Anything additional, or is there no means of doing so?
Well, I di, I didn't wanna presume to be able to modify the hours of operation. Um, I, I, you know, I, I don't know what, what is expected, um, at the temple. If, if, uh, the modification of the hours of operation is, uh, is a possibility, you know, I could see, you know, uh, weekend services, nine AM, weekday services, I would say eight AM. But again, I don't wanna presume that that's even an option for the applicant.
No, I understood, Councilor Landman. I, I would say that preferable to that would be in deference to a set noise standard. We, we reference the MPCA residential standard that exists, and if they're not meeting it, they're not in compliance with the CUP. They could operate at the hours they, they've suggested, but it'd be their burden to figure out a way to make the noise not escape to that level, right? Whether that's for additional installation, uh, insulation, uh, burning, you know, what, whatever the remedy ends up being. So that, that's one way to look at it. If you feel that that can't be done, you go to that next level of, well, I, you know, the hour restriction would address the issue, then that is probably the next one. If you feel that both can't solve the problem, that is where you reach to.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'm, I'm still at a no with that.
Staff feel like they have articulated reasons from the notebooks?
Um, yeah, we can, we, we will go away soft, the findings provided, um, we, i- is it just an amendment to the, sorry, do you want us to just draft it based on what the discussion and then it's done? Or do you want it back before you to officially approve it? I, I kind of forgot where we are if we've already approved that resolution.
So, Councilor Van Camp does have a motion, but no second. With, with the added conversation, if you could draft something and bring it back to the next meeting? I would go that way.
Do you have to denial based on the discussion?
Yep.
Back to the next meeting? Okay.
Please.
One, one second, yep. So we do have a motion, does anyone, do we have a second?
What was the motion?
To, direct staff to draft a resolution of denial based on the conversation. And the, the, uh, finding the fact that you three laid out.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I'd like to hear then.
Yep.
It, it, it seems as if the council knows the reasons for its denial tonight and to ensure that staff drafts a resolution that's, consists with those reasons, I think it'd be helpful to have those all articulated this, this evening, so we're not in an ambiguous state where different reasons are, are stated at some other point. Um, obviously we want this to be approved, but it's going to be denied. We'd like to know why and have that, uh, have that known as soon as possible.
I think it would.
We've, we've done this in the past where we've come back with the written information and the next meeting, I think, is reasonable enough, so.
The only other thing I'd have, do you know if there's any flexibility on the hours of operation?
Well, I guess I would ask if the, if, if there are no actual noise concerns, uh, is the council going to regulate? My parents read their Bible and sing hymn in morning. Uh, is the council gonna regulate that activity at, at front home of the rural areas?
I, I don't see it being the same. I see it something different. So, I see this as a, a group of people making an effort to start a church, start a temple and such, and I don't, I don't agree it's, in its location, it might be an allowed use and such, but to change, change the, uh, environment of all of our rural areas and stuff without it truly going through the same things that are other religious groups have gone through in this city to build a church or to build a temple, this will be our first temple. I just don't see it being the same, the same requirements and stuff.
So we just, we have a motion and a second? Uh, Landman?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else in discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Ms. Mayor, I'm sorry, can, can we clarify, just for, for staff's benefit, the, the specific findings and reasoning? I, I just want, I, I'm, I'm not clear on it. I, I, forgive me, I, can we clarify that just for, for our?
Yep, first of all, the motion was to, to bring it back.
Bring it back, right, and with, and can we just clarify the direction on that, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
It was, you three wanna take the lead on, on.
It is safety noise to the rural residents around this property, um, and again, what's been done in the past for other religious institutions to build their, their churches in Corcoran. Even though they were a rural residential side and all that stuff before the Musa ever came out here and such, there was a significant amount of requirements for them to build their churches and, and their worship spaces and stuff. And they, they, they look more like a religious place than a, a pole barn, just modified and changed.
But it is a permissible use in rural residential to have a temple.
It's a conditional use.
Conditional.
Conditional, thank you.
Same as the, 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 the churches that are there now, but inside the Musa, so.
So, I, I have a question for Mr. Thames. I think I gave the same spiel for the quick trip last meeting. So, what a conditional use means is the use is potentially permitted, provided it doesn't conflict with standards that would impact surrounding properties.
That you can't mitigate with.
That you can't mitigate. So council is entirely permitted to make its own determination as to whether an application would violate the standards in code for a conditional use, provided they're based on reasonable findings of fact. I don't know that there's anything in the code that would talk about comparing this application to other applications that we think other people might have had to go through in the past. So I don't think that last one makes sense to include. That's me just giving my opinion. I think on public safety, there's potentially a valid basis there. Noise potentially a valid basis, but I just wanna be careful we don't try to include things that aren't a sound basis in code, uh, to ensure that we're as protected as we can be as a council as a body decides to go down this road.
I agree, thank you.
So to answer Mr. Thames' question, public safety concerns.
Noise is another one?
Sounds like architectural standards.
Architectural standards.
Technical standards. What was, did you have a third, Michelle?
I think, did you mention noise? I thought, I heard someone say noise concerns with the surrounding properties.
Surrounding properties, even though there hasn't been complaints, they've been tolerant and.
There was a complaint. There was someone that heard or made a complaint.
They talked to somebody at city hall and such.
Potential noise pollution.
Mayor, and then, so, so lastly, I think we have kind of a, a, a start there. The, the latter point that I, that I was trying to get to is, so you, you, you're making a, a finding that, that doesn't comply with the conditions referenced by Councilor Nichols. And then the, the second part of that analysis being that there aren't reasonable conditions that can be placed on the. that can be placed on the application to make it fit, uh, within the, the proposed use and allowable under the code. So, um, if you can direct staff on, on what, what you want that to say.
I, I have a question.
Yes.
For the QuickTrip CUP, we added a condition on hours of operation. Is that?
An option?
Given the Ralupa requirements, which doesn't apply to a gas station, but does apply here, is that a valid thing to include?
Councilor Nichols, uh, Mr. Council, I, there are definitely some different considerations here than QuickTrip, so I'm hesitant to go too much one-to-one from those two applications. But, um, there were some hour limitations that we talked about there, based on that being a requirement to fit within the neighborhood. If that is the only thing that you can do to make it fit within the, um, within the neighborhood, you can make a finding to that effect and restrict the hours correspondingly. There are other considerations here.
No.
Being that it's a church, um, you're correct. But ultimately, the reasoning is yours. You, you, you can make the, the call on that. We don't want to, uh, substantially burden the, the church's operation or, or what they, what they do. But you can make a determination, you don't believe that that does that well, protects the neighborhood enough to allow them to operate. It, it's just, we, we just have to make our findings, give our reasoning for what the restriction is and why, if it can't be mitigated, why it can't be mitigated.
I'll just add another layer to that. We wanna be careful that we treat this similarly to other uses of assembly in the district. Event centers per code are allowed to operate until 10:00 PM daily. There is nothing identified as the start time in our code. Additionally, it says no sound, no sound amplifications, it says we use it outdoors after 10:00 PM. So I would say we would, I, I would be wary to limit the hours of operation, knowing that we give that flexibility for event centers.
Is that considered an event center or a place of worship?
Event center is a place of, is a, is a, is a place of assembly. And Ralupa, you wanna be careful to not treat other places of assem- or to treat religious uses more stringent than other places of assembly allowed in the district.
Okay.
So things that are particular hours that would make it more amenable to you for start time?
Well, I guess I would, um, you know, and instead of just me picking an arbitrary time, I would, I would perhaps mirror the, uh, construction noise limitations.
So that would be seven AM, or I'm sorry, eight, eight to four on the weekends and then that'd be seven to seven during the weekdays. Uh, but this is quite different than construction.
If we're, if we're doing that, we're limiting all of our churches to these hours then too.
Well, it's a condition in the CUP, so it would be specific to the application.
But it, it would probably set how we have to treat event centers, how their CUPs.
And other similar uses that may come in after this that have to have the, yeah, that have some kind of limitation. So it's just something to keep in mind.
John, do you think you got, did you get an answer that's sufficient?
Um, well, I, I, Mayor, I've, I've heard the council kind of discuss the, the possibility of, of the hours and how that might affect some other things. Um, I, I don't know if, if that's the route we're going, but, um, I, I guess what I'm, what I'm pushing for a bit more is that, like I said, that second part of the analysis about, um, okay, if it doesn't fit as the conditions are written, um, is the council also finding that it can't be remedied with any additional conditions? Or that there are conditions, we just haven't named them yet, in which case, maybe that's a different option. But, um, we, you know, it's council's discretion what you wanna, what you wanna find on that. It's just a matter of, you know, I didn't wanna cover that second part, so.
Could we look at what other places of worship's hours are? Or does that impede?
Dean, would you mind withdrawing the motion just for now and then we can turn it back just for safe measure?
For now, yes, I will withdraw.
Thank you.
Didn't, I hit a second though, didn't I?
That's fine, thank you.
To be consistent, 'cause I think consistency is important, can you do that though? Like, it's different than like a QuickTrip or a gas station that has set hours?
I, my understanding is.
May I, real quick?
Sure.
This is my somewhat educated opinion. If we go to the extreme and say, what if there was a proposed use where if we wanted to have a larger assembly at 2:00 AM? Would it be reasonable for a council to place restriction if it's gonna happen in a rural environment? It seems to me like there's a reasonable argument to be made that, under the CUP criteria, that would affect other people's enjoyment of their property for purposes already approved in the zone. So, to me, I, I think there is an argument that can be made, that we could set a reasonable limit. I think the parallel between an event center and something like this is an imperfect one because events typically don't happen very early in the morning. They're usually afternoon-evening affairs that run late rather than start early. I would be fine pursuing an update to code to add a start time for event centers too, if we need to be consistent.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea on another date to look into that for sure, but.
I agree.
And I will just say St. John's, just for other hours, uh, Councilor Friedrich, they open every day at 7:30.
Except Easter when they have sunrise services.
Well, and that's what, that's my understanding as to part of the reason why they have the hours they do is because the ceremony is based on sunrise. So I think that's part of the hours.
Don't they have a school too?
Well, and they have to go to work and things like that. These are, so they're all taking, uh, turns doing the ceremony, oh, I'm sorry, St. John's. I don't, I, I, yeah, I, I believe they do.
I think St. John's has a school. St. Thomas is nine AM.
Yeah. But I, just to say that this is a different religion, so there's different, there's different ceremonies that they're having that I believe are partly based on sunrise and sunset, but I.
Yeah.
I'm not trying to speak for you, so feel free to correct me if I'm wrong.
That was what I was wondering, that's why I was asking, I was.
So we need, I think, to answer, uh, Attorney Thames' reasoning, looking more directly, if we're gonna go down that route.
Yeah, for, for Quick, Mayor, if I may?
Yeah.
For, for clarity on the hours, I think the, the superior approach on this would be to a, adjust the other factors on the property that are causing and defending noise first. If, if that can be done, that's your, you know, so whether you hold with the MPCA standards, additional screening, burming, uh, additional, uh, noise mitigation within the primary structure, wha- whatever that ends up being. If, if you believe that that can't reach a sufficient level, you can look at hours and that still is less restrictive on the operation than an outright denial. So, you know, it's still better to give them the hours you think that you, that are appropriate and you can give, uh, over an outright denial. If you're, if you're making a finding for denial, you're finding that, uh, in addition to it not meeting, meeting the conditions, you can't make it meet the conditions with the mitigating factors that would be at your disposal. So, I.
So to take that into a practical, into this application, I think, just clearly a split on if we think that the mitigation is sufficient or not amongst council. Is there anything in that first area that John was talking about of other mitigating factors that could make it comply to, to you?
What about acoustic tile or acoustic standards being applied to the pole barn structure? Would that deal with the residual risk that council is concerned about?
I've got concerns with meetings they've already had, that the neighbors have heard it. So, if they've been in the house doing it and people are hearing it, the windows are open. Uh, uh, again, the, the noise during the times, it carries a long way if the winds travel in any one direction, so.
Just to be clear, there, you don't think that there's any mitigating, additional mitigating things we can implement that would, additional items we could im- implement to mitigate that issue, to make it comply? I'm not, I'm not.
Yeah, I'm not a, I'm not a designer, I'm not a, an architect or anything else. I just, all of these things would come into effect if they were building a structure. It would be a different thing than turning a pole barn into a worship space.
Okay. Michelle or Mark?
Well, again, I'm not a, uh, I'm not a, a sound engineer, but for, for me, I think if you are able to mitigate this through the use of tiles or some other sound dead, deadening materials, I, I would be fine with that. I'm not an expert on quiet.
We could certainly look at that, if that is a good condition, you could look at the other, work with the applicant to identify additional sound dampening materials for the use.
If I, if I may, Mayor, I just, one possible suggestion, um, potentially to address the, what I, I'm hearing from Councilor Van Camp, this is concern about, uh, potentially the, the conflict between, are we hearing things off the property or not? The obligation is to comply with the MPCA standards. We, we've made that a condition of this, and that's the residential standard. So, one possibility would be, as a condition of the CUP, that, uh, the council could require, um, at the time of, of their, they complete their build-out, uh, within that first year, that some noise testing, a sound engineer, uh, be set up off-site, uh, to, to confirm that it's meeting those standards, um, before, and to, before, to basically to allow them to continue their operation. If they are during their services, um, then it relieves the concern. If they're not, uh, they would have to do additional mitigated measures, uh, to address that. So that would, and that, that would be another, another way to, to be sure before they're fully up and running that the sound has been addressed.
Okay.
Could I add one thing?
Sure.
I just, I know we had mentioned the Hindu temple in Maple Grove. And the Hindu temple in Maple Grove's hours are Monday through Sunday from nine AM to nine, or to eight PM, nine-thirty AM. Saturday and Sunday, they open at nine AM, but during the week, they're opening at nine-thirty AM to eleven-thirty AM, and then five-thirty PM to eight PM. I don't know if it's the same, I'm, I'm just throwing that out there. Okay, great.
I believe they're, they're, um, again, I don't wanna speak to it, but I believe they're a slightly different, um, religious section.
Yep.
And, uh, again, there's the, they, part of their ceremony is to wake up their di- deity in the morning and put them to bed at night, so.
Gotcha.
That, that's a different, a different religion, a different church, they, they're different, they don't need to convert?
No, 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 I only referenced it because we had brought that up, yes.
Anything else?
The, the noise mitigation strategy?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I would be fine with that. You know, my, my thing is, if I was a neighbor, I wouldn't want, respectfully, I wouldn't want them to be my five AM wake-up call. And if, if, if that can be addressed, I'm, I'm fine with it.
So that, that suggestion that you made of the test and that if it was out of compliance, we'd bring it up with them and if it was a.
That they'd have to be brought into compliance before they could, you know, commence operations. Yeah, you could make that a condition.
Okay.
I did just one comment. We're talking about two people in this location in the morning. I have seven people live at my house. And I've got, I'll have more cars and more activity and more noise in my house, I'm gonna give a day, and it'll occur at this. And I'm confused by this as a significant concern. We already have noise standards in place that are meant to deal with these things that apply in a uniform basis. Why we're sealing up this avenue?
I think to answer that directly, it's because of the five AM start time. And because of the residential character of the existing area. I think the latest discussion is just a verification that the existing condition we already approved is being satisfied, which to me doesn't feel like an escalation, it's just confirming that what we think is going to work, has actually worked.
And if it doesn't, additional measures should be taken, such as tiles, yeah, I think that.
So, amended that in, does that lift the needle for you?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion to amend, do you have enough of what the conversation was to, to draft that? Okay, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
opposed?
Nay.
Four of one, and then, uh, does someone wanna make a motion, Jeremy, or, I think you did it before on one point?
I did it last time, I'll do it again. In light of that amendment, to further ensure the effectiveness of the controls, I will move to approve Resolution 2025 dash forty-five.
I will second it. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
opposed?
Nay.
Four of one? All right, thank you. Does anyone need a break before? Okay, we'll take a, uh, eight-minute recess here and be back at about nine thirty-five. Nine-minute recess.
Bottom was really confused.
Here you go? All right, we'll go ahead and call the meeting back to order. We online? Perfect. And we will go right into item seven B, which is the Chastick Family Farm Rezoning and Preliminary Platte. And if you wanna do it the same way we just did, we'll do comments first and then presentation and discussion.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a comment card from Steve Mueller.
One second, let me, let me get my timer machine set up, yeah?
Good evening, I know this is a preliminary meeting, so I will be very brief. My name is Steve Mueller, seven-four, seven-four, Berlaine North and Bassley Crossing, our development butts up against Maple Hill Road and County Road ten. I just wanna address two things that are in Natalie's twenty-one-page staff report for the Chastick Family Farm Platte. The first item is turn lanes from County Road ten. After reviewing two turn lanes, the conclusion from the staff report is only one westbound turn lane from County Road ten is needed. The developer claims in a May fifteenth letter that any turn lanes are outside the scope of their project and they shouldn't be responsible for paying for them. However, I want to reinforce that the one westbound turn lane on County Road ten is an excellent suggestion, based strictly on safety. This example really simplifies that fact. Because we have a safe turn lane from County Road ten into our development, the school bus for the kids in the Maple Hill manufactured home park will sometimes come through our neighborhood as a way to Maple Hill Road. The school bus actually sometimes drives too fast because we have no stops in Bassley Crossing. We have no school-age kids in a senior development, so they're strictly using us as a safe turn lane shortcut to Maple Hill Road. So obviously, a westbound turn lane directly onto Maple Hill Road is very important, especially with that curb on County Road ten. The second item is a request by the developer to cap the city improvement to five hundred thousand with the city subsidizing any overage. If the city accepts that proposal, there is a chance, through the four-twenty-nine process, to assess us homeowners. There are only six homes out of ninety-five Bassley Crossing homes directly on Maple Hill Road. However, our entire community of ninety-five homes could be susceptible because of the common area. Personally, I'm a three streets away from that road, so I would normally never use it. On page twenty-one of Natalie's staff report, there's a summary discussion question that says, "Is there a desire to complete a four-twenty-nine assessment project for the improvements to Maple Hill Road? We respectfully hope you will agree that answer should be no." Why the developer is even using hypothetical five hundred thousand numbers is puzzling. They certainly would know the actual cost of that road replacement. The developer should be responsible for the cost of the road and the turn lane unless maybe head up in county helps. Thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Comment card from Lynn Alberts.
Okay.
Good evening, thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight. My name is Lynn Alberts and my address is seventy-four ninety Berlaine, and I'm the treasurer for Bassley Crossing Home Management Association. I wanted to talk to you about the Chastick Farm approval of a land use application. Before the application and development agreement are finalized and approved by the council, I would like to suggest that a clause be added to the development agreement that states if the developer damages property neighboring land, that that escrow agreement will pay for the damages. Now, Beth has said that she's not responsible for payment, but, but I still have this written up, so, but she says she's not responsible. I still have this written down, but she says she's not responsible. As a truck development and JV Limited for Cook Lake Highlands damaged our main irrigation line on June fifth, twenty twenty-four, installing the sidewalk for Cook Lake Highlands. Beth and the truck developments supervised the contractor. She said she did supervise it, but the contractor mentioned her name when he hit the line. The contractor and Beth knew that the irrigation line was buried there from when the road was installed two years prior. We specifically said it's right here. You could see where it was at. Pat, the contractor, admitted that he had forgotten the irrigation line was there until he hit it. Our irrigation contractor Midwest Landscaping repaired the damaged line. The cost to repair the main irrigation line was one thousand eight hundred and forty dollars. Beth Houston asked for a copy of that invoice on June fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. We have been sending a copy of the invoice every month since June twenty twenty-four to Beth Houston and Jake and Robert from JV Limited. They still have not paid for the damage to our irrigation line. We have talked to Jay at the city, and he said the city has no ability to get reimbursed from JV Limited or Truck Development. We are very disappointed that Truck Development and JV Limited will not respond to our emails stating why they think that they do not have to pay the invoice. Whatever happened to being a good neighbor and taking responsibility when you damage a neighbor's property? Please, and this is for the legal counsel, please add a clause to your development agreement that addresses this issue, so that if there's damage to neighboring property during development, they can get reimbursed. We currently have irrigation lines along the Chastick property line. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. I don't have any other comment cards.
Does anyone else want to speak? Okay. And we will go on to presentation. And briefly, Mr. Thames, could you comment on feasibility of something like that? My thoughts would be that there'd probably be a private, you know, right of action between the two parties if there's property damage on one. So, you know, a lawsuit directly between those two parties would probably be.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The, these, these, these types of incidents are very factually specific. I think that the development contract, which does contemplate security from the developer, you know, off-site damage, would be developers' responsibility. I think the fact pattern that he's referencing, there are a couple other elements to it that act as a bar to the, to taking any action based on some of the reporting, the timing of the reporting, and what had occurred by the time it was. However, I think the development agreement and securities that are a part of it do allow us to secure that developer fixes what they, what they damage.
As-is.
As-is. Okay, yes, thank you.
So, if I, if I'm interpreting that right, had we known earlier, it would have been possible to intervene?
Quite possibly.
Exactly.
What's the, can I discuss what the timing would have to be then?
I'd say before any work's completed, if you had notified the city, then we would have gotten our engineering team out there and worked with you on the developer to get to a regulation.
So you mean, like, before the repair was created?
Yeah, before someone was hired to complete the repair, and before it was completed. Having the city get involved at the beginning stages would have been key to expediting it to the way that they're, they're hoping to be resolved.
Well, that doesn't necessarily preclude you from trying to resolve this previous one of the-
So we have to go to small payments court?
Potentially.
I've done that.
Not trying to give legal advice, just saying.
Well, you know, that's my next step.
Yeah.
Okay, Adel?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, so, the item before us is Chastick Family Farm. It's a rezoning in preliminary plat. The applicant is Truck Real Estate in Development and Temple Real Estate, doing business as Emerald Rose LLC. The proposal would be for a hundred and four single-family residential lots and three outlots, and the site location is at seventy-six hundred Maple Hill Road, which is just northeast of the Maple Hill Road and County Road ten intersection. This is a visual of the proposed development. The first component that we need to look at tonight is the rezoning. The applicant is requesting that the property be rezoned from RSF two to RSF three. The major difference being a smaller lot size for RSF three and a sixty-five-foot width lot frontage. Staff finds there is reasoning for support of the rezoning request. The council and the city in general have the following criteria listed in code for evaluation. The proposed action has been considered in relation to the specific policies and provisions of, and has found to be consistent with the city comprehensive plan, including public facilities and improvement, and capital improvement plans. The requested rezoning is anticipated to achieve at least the minimum density required of low-density residential areas in the twenty forty comprehensive plan, so staff finds it is consistent with our policies and plans established. The proposed action meets the purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance, or, in the case of a map amendment, it meets the purpose and intent of the individual district. The proposed rezoning does meet the purpose and intent of the RSF three district, which specifically states it is intended to be the primary single-family zoning district for new residential development. Third, there is adequate infrastructure available to serve the proposed action. There is not currently adequate road infrastructure in this area, and speaking about Maple Hill Road and County Road ten intersection, to support the proposed development. A condition of the development moving forward is to complete road improvements, as currently recommended by staff, I have a whole slide on that later, in order for this area to support an increase in traffic. Trunk sewer is currently available on the site, and water pressure and supply were confirmed adequate for the project as part of the infrastructure feasibility study completed by our engineering team. Lastly, there is an adequate buffer or transition between potentially incompatible districts. The RSF three district is compatible with the planned unit development districts to the south and east, which use the RSF three standards as their base. Directly north is the manufactured home park district, which does have a higher density of homes, but typically, we do not require lower-density uses to screen from higher-density uses as they come in. But the applicant does have, on the plan, a privacy fence near portions of the north boundary of the project to provide some screening for both sides. Finally, a buffer yard Class A is required around the perimeter of the exception piece that is in the northeast quadrant of the site. So, if the city determines that we will approve the rezoning, then we can go to the preliminary plat analysis. Again, it's a hundred and four single-family lots that are proposed. The minimum lot size is seventy-five hundred square feet in the RSF three district, and their lot sizes range from seventy-eight hundred square feet roughly, to the larger lot being about twenty-eight thousand square feet. All lots do comply with the minimum lot width of sixty-five feet, and all shown building pad locations comply with the setback requirements. Additionally, lots thirty and thirty-four have at least part of the lot that fall within the shoreline overlay district. The portion of the property that is within the shoreline overlay district has an impervious surface limit of twenty-five percent and a height limit of twenty-five percent. It appears that those impacted lots would be able to comply with those standards. A specific builder was not identified, but example elevations from M and I homes was, were provided, and they were included in the packet. They are not seeking any variances from our architectural standards, so they will be expected to fully comply with both Section ten sixty dot zero fifty subdivision one B, which is our residential district standards generally, and then we have, we have suburban architectural standards for RSF one, RSF two, RSF three, and Section ten forty dot zero forty subdivision eight. And so that's where we have the maximum garage size and things like that. So, the staff report goes bit by bit through each standard that they'll be required to comply with. It does appear that the provided example elevations will be able to comply. Further compliance with these standards will be confirmed with each building permit review for each individual home. And then staff identified several properties that have multiple facades, and that means the facade that faces the public street but isn't technically a front for how we defined it for our architectural standards. They have a slightly higher standard. They have to, they have to have two different materials, and their style's compatible with the front elevation. So basically, what's visible to the street has to speak to each other and be consistent. And so, the resolution in front of you does identify those lots. So as they come in, staff, that'll, staff will be able to confirm that compliance, confirm compliance on those lots. For the wetlands and landscaping, there are five wetlands on site. Wetland buffers and monument sites will be, must be established, and that is further discussed in the staff report. For the most part, it looks like they'll be able to comply. There are just a couple of areas where we needed potentially some additional lifts, or just some clearer measurements provided by the applicant. Overall, a total of a hundred and fourteen overstory trees and nineteen understory trees are required. They are proposing a hundred and nineteen overstory trees and twenty-nine understory trees. They do comply, however, a little bit of more work needs to go into the buffer yard around the exception piece, which is what's shown here. They don't, we need some, the buffer also needs to extend down to, down to Maple Hill, so actually to the west. Also, native grasses and native and naturalized species must be within that planted buffer yard. And so there is a condition of approval that the landscaping plan, any changes that include only native grasses and native species within that area. Planted buffer yard is not required along the east and south property lines of the development, the perimeters. They do have to have a setback, but nothing needs to be planted in that area. So that is, again, something that they comply with currently, and that area is identified as part, in part of the resolution, to make sure that we are keeping that space available for the buffer. The plat shows four full accesses currently shown into the development. Two are on Maple Hill Road, and two access, two accesses are provided to the Fairway Shores development to the east. The northern connection that they are showing on Maple Hill Road does not comply with the city's road network spacing shown in our southeast district plan. It creates spacing and safety conflicts with the existing church driveways across the street, and it does not meet our spacing guidelines for connector streets. And I have an image here, so, just to give you some comparison. Our southeast district plan anticipates a road network that would line more with the exception piece and the northern boundary of Chastick, so probably more of the, and what they're showing is a little further south, and the problem is, is we have two, oh, I'm sorry, I forgot that you can't see my laser pointer. Okay, now you can see. So we have, here's the exception piece, and then for reference, here's the exception piece on the, on the plat. So, the, we expected a grid alignment, and what they're proposing would create a driveway right in the middle of the grid alignment proposed on the west side of Maple Hill. So that would create a long-term conflict, and then there's an interim conflict with the two driveways that are existing for the church today. So, staff recommends to replace the northern full access with a cul-de-sac or turnaround. An emergency access in this area is not required with the condition that a connection to Fur Lane North is provided at the onset of the development, because that would mean they have two ways in and out. If they can't secure that connection to Fur Lane North, then an emergency access would be required on Maple Hill. But I believe the intent is for them to obtain that access.
Does that mean that Maple Hill wouldn't need to be upgraded up to that northern emergency connection?
Correct. The upgrade is to the northernmost access on Maple Hill. So, if their, an emergency access does become required, sorry, my computer's freaking out. I'm glad you guys can't see it. The, if the emergency access were to, okay, were to become required, then they would have to improve it to be emergency access. If they, but, we don't have a standard to say that, from the city's end, that we have to require it if they have that access to Fur Lane North. So there's a couple of conditions where Fur Lane North is going to be, connection to Fur Lane North at the onset of the development is going to be in their best interest to obtain, but that we have it kind of planned in case that's not achievable.
Okay. And that's all in as drafted?
As drafted, yes. Let me see if this will work. Go ahead.
Potential follow-up, doesn't throw you too off. I think we raised that open forum about having any sort of influence on the access for construction. Do we have, you see any ability to try to mitigate some of that, so it's not all coming up furway for both developments? I know one of them is not being discussed now, but.
Right. I, I don't, so for Fairway Shores, there, there's talk of that easement that is on the Chastick property. That is a farm access only, so that is not, that is not a construction access easement, so that's not something that could be utilized for the construction traffic for Fairway Shores. So, with, since Fur Lane is a public street, and that is the only access currently to that property, that is their construction access. As far as the construction access for this one, would you, typically that's handled with the final plat, but do you have a-
Typically with the final plat, and a little bit depends on the phasing, but because their main access would come from the west, I would anticipate we would try to route as much, if not all, the construction access.
Off of May.
But it is a little dependent on what the phasing looks like.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, okay, so the street improvements. The improvements to Maple Hill Road and County Road ten were identified as necessary to support the proposed development as part of the city's infrastructure feasibility study. A condition of approval for the developer is to responsible for construction of a dedicated westbound right turn lane on County Road ten, three hundred feet in length. Improvement of Maple Hill Road to current city standards from the northernmost access of the development on Maple Hill Road to County Road ten to support the additional traffic. There, that would include southbound left and right turn lanes on Maple Hill Road to access County Road ten. The final design of these improvements on Maple Hill Road will be determined as the project moves forward. After additional review completed by staff with data that was provided by a traffic engineer hired by the applicant team, staff recommends removal of the requirement in the feasibility study for an eastbound left turn lane, with the condition that access to Fur Lane North is provided at the onset of the development. Once we had more data, it, it did seem that that, it's right at the threshold, and the reality is, with Fur Lane, if there is a connection, there was data to support foregoing the turn lane at this time.
But just the eastbound, right?
Just the eastbound left turn lane, correct. We'd still require the westbound right turn lane into, on Maple Hill.
Gotcha.
And then, the applicant would like to discuss the road improvement requires, with requirements with city council tonight, and the potential for a city-initiated project. The four-two-nine assessment is what's called out in the staff report for the Maple Hill Road and County Road ten improvements. And I do believe she, I believe Beth is planning to speak after my presentation.
Sounds good.
The other question before the council tonight is the matter of the trail. The twenty forty comprehensive plan identifies a proposed trail to connect Maple Hill Road. Sorry, I bet, I don't know what I was thinking there. The twenty forty comprehensive plan is ident, does identify a off-road trail corridor. So, let me get my laser pointer again. So, okay, it is not working. Well, if you can see which one the arrow is pointing to, it's along the northern boundary there, and then-
So is what, last few houses on the left, right? Upper, or, well, of the actual plat, right?
Oh, um, sorry, I don't know, my, the laser pointer is not working.
There, right?
Yes, that, that is the off-road trail. So it's shown along the northern boundary. What that doesn't show you is there are two wetland complexes.
Wait, they didn't look.
There are two wetland complexes that that would conflict with. Additionally, there has been some changes in the off-road trail alignment that was secured with Fairway Shores, which would follow more north before heading along the west side of Cook Lake or the Cook Lake wetland complex on that site. So really, the site constraints do not allow for a continuous trail experience. So, Counselor Nichols, if you could help me here. Basically, what they are showing is the, actually go up to, no, no, no.
Top side of it.
The tops, so if you could go-
Over to the left.
Yeah, so, they're showing this off-road corridor, and then it goes down to the road, becomes an on-road trail, and then goes back to off-road. And actually, that happens twice, because as you go on the further east side, it happens again due to the wetlands and stormwater pounding there. So it really is a very interrupted experience. You know, staff was looking at this, and it was kind of who's actually going to choose with the sidewalk also already on the north side of Street C, who's going to choose to walk around, to come back to walk around. So, the, it was kind of the question of, does that make sense? The, an idea of an on-road trail instead of a sidewalk was discussed with Public Works, and they, there's a lot more maintenance concerns that happen with an on-road trail when it intersects with multiple driveways, because we maintain those trails versus sidewalks is something that the HOA or the property owner are responsible for maintaining. So their desire, and staff's desire became, let's forego the off-road trail, just do the sidewalk, have that connect to Fairway Shores, and then the off-road corridor would begin with the Fairway- would begin with the Fairway Shores development. Um, however, the council could decide to take the trails currently shown, the trail corridors currently shown. Um, if we do that, there, um, sorry, the fences along the northern project boundary would be recommended to be revised so that they both run along the backyards of the lots. Because right now, one of the fences on the northeast side are more along the northern project boundary. And my concern being that that kind of closes off the, uh, trail. So I think it'd provide more screening for the residents if those were both on the backyard perimeters instead of the outlaw perimeter.
Can, can I ask a quick question on this one too?
Mm-hmm.
So the trail width we would have for an off-road trail would be eight feet. If we forego that and do a sidewalk instead in the front yard area, can we widen the sidewalk to be the same eight-foot width as the rest of that trail would be when it's not going through this development?
Um, so the trail, so you're talking about just the pavement? Because the trail corridor would be typically a twenty-foot easement?
Correct, but the trail itself, the paved surface.
Okay, you're talking about an eight-foot, paved. What are your thoughts on that?
Trees in that boulevard?
Um, that's a good question.
So the concern I just think is, it's, with the sixty-foot right away and a twenty-eight-foot road, and what leaves us with? Eleven feet on either side, so it might shrink in that boulevard. So if you have trees in there, it wouldn't give an adequate room for the trees.
But if we didn't have the trail in the back, the lots could be deeper. Everything can get shifted back three feet.
You'd need additional right away then, or you'd need a wider right away is what you're saying, to accommodate that boulevard?
Um, so part of my hesitation is just that it's a straight plat. So when we do that, we'd have a little, little room to negotiate additional, but I think there any, like, if our standard is for?
How wide is the sidewalk as is?
Usually the, um, five feet, yeah.
My, I guess my grounds for it would be, we're foregoing part of our comp plan, which has an eight-foot trail with a twenty-foot easement in the backyard to accommodate their need to get to a certain density. Um.
We'd also be getting more park dedication cash in lieu though.
Yeah. But we would be getting some of that anyway. Even if, if we took the trail in the back, we still get some cash in lieu.
Yes, just minus whatever that amount is.
Right.
Do you have that?
Mayor Council, I, I think you could, um, to Natalie's point, I, I, I think because this is a, a straight plat, you're, you're kind of bound by your existing standards. You, you could, um, provide some city financing for, for an improvement like that or offset it with park dedication, um, you know, at, if, uh, if that's desired. But just requiring the, the larger sidewalk than you would in the neighboring developments, I, I think that you would have to have a basis for that, so.
Natalie, what's the commission?
Oh, Parks and Trails Commission, they agreed they didn't like the disruption to the corridor experience, so they agreed, and they didn't want to take on an on-road trail and the maintenance of that, so they agreed with staff recommendation. Um, but again, we can take the, we can take the corridor, that's, it's up, it's entirely up to your discretion. Um, just note that there is, um, a, a severe hesitation to undertake a boardwalk over an outlawed again, I'm sorry, over a wetland again. Um, and so it would result in portions of the trail that would essentially either be sidewalk, um, either having it tee, and I think that's what's really recommended if we go this route, having the trail tee up to the sidewalk, um, or it'd be an on-road trail in those portions. Um, but I think for, I think for the sake of maintenance, it'd be easier if the off-road trail teed up to the sidewalk if we were to go that route.
Gotcha. Is there anything else in your presentation or was it?
Um, I'm sorry, my, my computer is not working. Um, basically the next slide is just the recommendation. Planning Commission and staff recommended approval of the, uh, resolutions, uh, the ordinances, twenty-twenty-five five fifty, which is the rezoning to RSF three. Uh, ordinance twenty-twenty-five five fifty-one, which is our summary ordinance. That does require a four-fifths majority vote to pass. And then we have two resolutions. Uh, the first one, twenty-twenty-five fifty-three approves findings of fact to support the rezoning to RSF three. And then resolution twenty-twenty-five fifty-four is approving the preliminary plat. And then I will just also add, unfortunately, we are at, very near the end of the one hundred and twenty-day review period, so we do need a final decision tonight.
Sounds good, thank you. Um, just to clarify one more time, I think I asked one of those, one of these questions already, but as drafted, the sidewalk, the trail to sidewalk is, was drafted in the?
So what is currently drafted was based on the recommendations, so we're, we're going. So we, we would need to adjust the resolutions if we wanted to do that. Um, right now, the park dedication anticipated in this resolution is entirely cash.
Okay, sounds good. And then the other one was the potential cul-de-sac or emergency access. They can't get that, is that all?
I confirm that language is currently in the resolution in front of you tonight.
Okay. Council thoughts on the trail?
Mr. Mayor, I apologize, I believe the applicant wanted to say a few words about the road. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and I'm the council and the, uh, track real estate and development. I'm here representing Maple Grove's LLC. Um, we would like to suggest and to ask the city council to consider a scaled back or phased four-twenty-nine assessment project that proportionately reflects the level of improvements needed for the new and existing residents generating traffic on Maple Hill Road. We are, uh, not asking you to assess properties that are not benefited by, uh, the improvements. Um, we are just asking you to assess the benefiting properties for the appropriate level of improvements that are directly and proportionally related to their use. If Maple Hill is in fact in poor condition and in need of maintenance and repair, this poor condition is a pre-existing condition and not related to the Chastick pro- project or its proposed traffic. The Chastick project is the first, is not the first development in the area using Maple Hill Road as access. There are approximately two hundred plus existing homes, uh, in Maple Hill Estates and other homesteads along Maple Hill, historically and currently using Maple Hill Road as the sole access to their property. In vastly crossings, there are ninety-seven units of single families, um, that, that access that also currently have an access onto Maple Hill Road. All of these properties are benefiting from an upgrade or an improvement in Maple Hill Road. If the four-twenty-nine project is designed to address the existing needs, then assessing the benefiting properties is, is appropriate and cost-effective. The traffic study confirms the Chastick cross, pro- project and the Fairway Shores project combined will generate sixteen percent of the overall existing traffic on Maple Hill Road. This is not enough traffic to justify charging the entire improvement project to the Chastick project. Twenty-five percent of the tra- of the traffic from the Chastick proj- project will use Maple Hill Road. The, the Chastick, oh gosh, the Chastick practice isn't, project is not the only new development proposed that will benefit and use Maple Hill Road as the second access. Developing the Chastick property provides a second access for Fairway Shores project and also in, improving safety access and traffic flow for that development. The infrastructure improvements for Maple Hill are proposed to be constructed within existing right-of-way owned by Hennessy County and existing right-of-way owned by the city of Corbin. They are off-site and outside the Chastick proposed preliminary plat, but within public right-of-way. We believe there is a solution that proportionately and reasonably addresses a level of improvements that accomplish the service requirements for the traffic generated by the Chast- Chast- Chastick District and the benefiting properties. There are approximately four hundred and nine benefiting property units adjacent to Maple Hill Road, and there are seventy-five units that benefit, an additional seventy-five units that benefit from Maple Hill Road as a second access. There's a total of four hundred and eighty-four units that benefit in some manner from the use of Maple Hill Road. If the approve, if, if the improvement costs are roughly one point five million dollars and the Chastick project is anticipated to be sixteen percent or less of the existing benefiting traffic, then two hundred and forty thousand dollars would be appropriate.
Where are you getting the one point five million dollars?
I said if, I said if it were, let's work out as one point five million dollars.
So that's a made-up number.
It's not a made-up number, it's an estimate of potentially.
An estimate or a made-up number?
That's a great question, and here's why. We don't know what these improvements are going to cost. We have no idea the extent of, of, we don't, we're being asked to improve property that is off our site. So we have no idea what the soils are like. We have, you know, it's not even our property to be working on. So that's a great question. We don't, we don't know what that, that, that's just a made-up number. You're right, it's just giving you an estimate so you can get an idea of your percentage of it.
So with that made-up number though, you're requesting a cap of five hundred thousand dollars, correct?
Actually, I'm, that's not how I worded it, but I'll, I'll, I'll get there, I'm almost there.
Okay, well.
If you just give me a minute, the remaining?
Well, hold on, I'm not done. Okay, in your letter though, you said that you wanted your contribution to be limited to five hundred thousand dollars.
I, I did call it a contribution, no cap, yeah.
So, okay, so five, you're limited to five hundred thousand. We don't know what the ultimate price is, but if it's more than five hundred thousand, then you want the city to assess others?
The other benefiting properties.
Okay.
That's my, that's my.
Wouldn't be a large departure from past practice.
The remain, so then?
Yes, it would be.
The remaining million of the one point five million or seventy percent of the cost would be proportionately assessed over the remaining three hundred and eighty benefiting properties. The Chastick development team proposes the first phase of improvements be constructed by the city, reflect and align with the needs generated by the existing benefiting community, and then propose low-density developments of the Chastick farm and the Fairway Shores. The first phase of road improvements constructed by the city can effectively serve as a solid foundation for the future final improvements required for the ultimate development of a connector road system or second phase of improvements to be completed in conjunction with the development of the downtown or the city town center district.
There's no application of, for that?
Correct, so it would happen at the time it is, it would be, it would, the, the full development, the full design and build-out of that connector road would happen at the time the demand from the downtown district is being proposed or approved or, it would be a part of that project. As proposed, the improvements have a disproportionate financial burden of the cost to be paid for by the Chastick project compared to the traffic that it will generate. As proposed, the Chastick project will pay for one hundred percent of the improvement costs. Using a phased four-twenty-nine directly related to percentage of benefit can sufficiently address the traffic and roadway issues generated by existing and proposed neighborhoods and proportionally allocate the improvement costs. The city has a strong vision for a town center in the downtown district immediately west of our project. As proposed, the improvements for Maple Hill Road should be a district-wide solution and a cost-sharing program. Again, the Chastick team has agreed to contribute five hundred thousand dollars to the city improvement project for Maple Hill Road. This contribution can sufficiently construct a westbound right turn lane within the Hennessy County right-of-way and help pay for more than the project's proportionate share of Maple Hill improvements as a benefiting property. We seek this evening your approval of the rezoning and the preliminary plat and ask if the city agree to work together to find a creative and equitable solution and to assess the benefiting properties for the Maple Hill improvements. And I just also would like to address, um, Lynn. And I did return your emails and I have been emailing back and forth with you regularly. So I, I am making huge effort to get that made.
I, I appreciate it, but let's probably have that a separate conversation, not, and, by council meeting. Thank you. Okay. Um, council, uh, any discussion on, I think we could tackle the four-twenty-nine request first perhaps? Um, I believe that would be a significant departure from past practice and, and how we've, um, and policy of, of having development pay its, its way and not, uh, having a city-funded road project to support development.
We've never been a, if you build it, they will come, city. Uh, and I would prefer to keep our liabilities as low as we can until there's a development that is sufficient to pay for the improvements that are needed in a given area. So I would be opposed to a change in policy at this time.
Council?
Kind of like, agreed?
Agreed.
See?
Y- yes, with the caveat of, and again, I, 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 I've been doing this so long and, and coming from Maple Grove and being part of their planning process. Everything was done related to developments and the, the cost was burdened to the developers and, and those kind of things. The, the caveat here, the, the difference here is, there's, we have a wish list of what we want to do with our downtown, but there's nothing in front of us saying it. A lot of the developments from where I came from were done at the same time on both sides of the road and the burden was shared between both property owners. I don't want to suggest this, I agree with, uh, council member Landerman and council member, what's your name again, Nichols, that's it, um, it's been a long night. I don't want to differ from that, but would there be a way to split that cost? The city doesn't have that money in a fund or anything right now to do that to the property, to the, to the.
The two property owners, if they wanted to come to an agreement, they certainly could.
Yes, and that's what has been recommended by staff, that they explore a private agreement with the property to us. And I would say at this point, um, the removal of the left turn lane, which, uh, based on our comparative bids done recently, is more expensive than a right turn lane on the county road. Um, that pretty much now has been deferred to most likely the west side coming in. Um, you know, could something else come in on the east side where all of a sudden that is triggered? It's possible, but most likely it'd be the west side at this point, that would trigger the need for the left turn lane.
Gotcha, appreciate it. So, yeah, I think to answer your question, it was yes.
Yep, and then I know that there's a, a study going on with the county from the Lions Park all the way to fifty, ten-fifty split, I think. But that's two or three years out, best-case scenario, so. I just, I, I agree with the other council, councilors that the burden is not part of the city right now, just past practices in many, many municipalities, so. I, I love the design, I love the looks, um, the, uh, property to the east. I can't wait to see it. But again, we're, we're putting a burden on a, a single street for that property through an existing neighborhood. But, uh, all things we're gonna have to deal with and talk about.
Yep. Okay.
As far as the trail, did we get through the trail?
We did not get, that was my next one.
The trail, well, Jeremy, I, I applaud you for trying to get as much as you possibly can, but just a normal sidewalk. And then I think the, the layout of that trail out to a point or a destination or a lookout, uh, on the Cook Lake and stuff, that's still part of that plan to the east of this.
To Fairway Shores, yeah.
So I, I, I don't know if we, if I lived in these properties, I don't know if I'd want a trail behind me. The fences and stuff, I'd, I'd love to see, but I'd rather see the cash.
I also think, I'm assuming the design, Natalie, would be somewhat similar to like, uh, Ravinia where there's a sidewalk in certain areas that kind of goes through driveways? Is that what's being proposed?
Yeah, so the sidewalk would be on the north side of Street C is what's currently proposed. So that would provide the access to Fairway Shores to the east and ultimately the off-road corridor, off-road trail corridor on Fairway.
And the only reason I bring that up is that obviously you don't want people walking into other people's driveways a bunch, but it's not like it's a, you know, five-foot, you fall off the cliff. If you want people to stay perfectly on the five-foot, you like to create a French bulldog out the front yard and have them bark at it. But other than that, because it's a little bit more give than just the straight five-foot for what it's worth. Um, but I would agree, agree with you, Dean, on.
Yeah, I'd, I'd rather just a sidewalk and then it's a destination out to that lookout point and then it turns into a parkway there, but through parkway, through this, it's already challenged enough with the water and those kind of things, so.
Shall I, Mark?
I agree.
Well, it, it doesn't matter to me. I can't, I can't get my arms around this contribution of five hundred. Well, it, it doesn't matter to me, I can't, I can't get my arms around this contribution of five hundred thousand dollars with the expectation that the city and, and, and other residents through a, a, an assessment are expected to pick up the rest of the tab, so.
I think we're saying no to that.
I don't, yeah, well, for me, that's the whole thing, so why, why even talk about sidewalks?
Councilor Landerman, the resolution in front of you tonight says that those requirements are their responsibility as a developer, so it approves the development with, um, being responsible for the road improvements as it's currently recommended by staff.
Okay, thank you.
So I think we have general consensus on the sidewalk, keeping it as is drafted, um, and on the four twenty-nine. Then the other one was emergen- was there anything needed to be decided really on that emergency that seemingly is, whether it's an emergency turnaround or...
So, right now, as, yeah. As it's drafted, um, currently as it's drafted, the north access would, must be changed to either a cul-de-sac or other city standard turnaround, um, and then...
That'd be determined by final plat, right?
Yeah, that'd be determined for the final plat, um, and then the public safety access would be determined, um, basically with that first addition, if they have acc- access to Cook Lake at the onset of the development or not. Uh, and so, and that's included as a, a condition of approval that, uh, if real lane is not available day one, they must provide that public safety access up to the north.
Okay. Other than that, does anyone have any questions or discussion items? Pretty straightforward development, um, you know, standard zoning, trade zoning, P U D. Um, like the, some of the architecture stuff that was discussed, and the general design of the neighborhood, I think was nice. Does anyone have any questions or want to take a crack at a motion? If there's no questions, I will make a motion to approve or adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five fifty, rezoning to RSF three, approve resolution twenty twenty-five fifty-three with findings of fact, and resolution twenty twenty-five fifty-four approving the preliminary plat.
I will second.
Any further discussion? All those in paper say aye.
Aye.
Closed?
Nay.
And so that passes point one, and then, um, we just have the summary ordinance, which is just for the newspaper. So I will make a motion to adopt summary ordinance twenty twenty-five, uh, five fifty-one. Who has a second?
Second.
Second there, where I can?
Either or.
Oh, you pick.
It's okay, we aren't gonna argue.
You can pick, um. Gotta spice it up sometimes.
Michelle.
That's, that's fine, you have to pick. That's totally fine. All right, um, any discussion? All those in paper say aye.
Aye.
That's a sample, perfect. Thank you very much, and that is all the planning items.
Thanks for staying, you guys.
Yeah, appreciate it. Absent that, uh, we have no unfinished business, no new business, uh, staff reports, anything from that?
Uh, no staff reports.
Council reports, anything from council, I'm trying to get an update on the Timberwolves.
They were well behind the last time I checked. Can I mention one thing, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I noticed, this is just for staff, um...
We do keep the chatter down just a little bit, it's hard to hear, hear on the mic.
Guys, we're still going here, thank you.
I just wanted to make a note for staff that, um, I've been noticing that people, the new trail that just went in into Vera on the northwest, northeast side, the diagonal one on the corner, right across from my house, right there, um, people have been driving across that when they come into the, to like view the lots, they think that it's actually an exit, and they've been driving on that trail, so I just, I just wanted to let staff know that, I don't, I don't know if that's, clearly it's not meant for cars, but...
It's not meant for regular cars, is it?
No.
I'm sure we can get some sort of cone sign.
Yeah, we can sign it.
I'm assuming like the houses are there to be able to mark there, but... Well, yeah, then it, then it should be obvious, then, then we'll send PD out to thank you. For now.
For letting us know.
Yep.
Perfect.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I was fortunate enough to go to the practice burn over off of Larkin, um, and such, the old, old home, hundred and thirty-year-old home, bricks, um, the fire departments got fifteen burns out of that thing before it was beyond, um, approach, um, many, many departments, part of it Rogers, um, obviously West Suburban. Hanover, there was some folks even from Clearwater, instructors came from, uh, I can't remember where, but, uh, it was...
Turned down a free opportunity.
Impressive to watch, watch the group do what they did, um, a lot of great practice, and a lot of great thanks to, uh, us for supporting all of our fire departments, so. It was, uh, it was a really good day. I did, but I got so blessed and cold, because I only wore a blue jean jacket, and it was forty-some degrees, but, uh, it was...
Fair enough. Maybe some of the cheese took some.
There, there was people taking pictures, but, uh, um, the, I, I got a picture of, and this was funny, the families actually showed up, the original person that had lived there sixty-some years, I think her name was Patty Gleason. They started in the sewing room, that first fire was in the sewing room, and, and watching all of the relatives and stuff talk about that, but, uh, our, uh, our fire departments do a lot for us, um, Matt, thank you for your, um, participation and, and direction in that stuff. The one thing that I have, and I think I told Jay Matt this, Jay, I told Jay this, Matt, do they have signs that they can put up saying practice in process or in progress, anything like that? Is there something we could give them, or if they have it, just didn't think they'd have traffic and, and understand it that way? Just a public safety thing and, and, uh, just ask them.
Yeah, Jay and I talked about that a little bit, I don't know if the fire department has those signs or not, or if they are planning to get them, but I think that's...
Check with them and see, I think you even used that for some police events and stuff too, and K nine and everything over the past couple of months too.
Do we like notify the dispatch when something like that goes on, or do they just take all the calls and...
Yeah, there's, yeah, dispatch is aware of there's a training going on.
Okay, so they're not sending like ten response calls to the same house that...
Yeah, nobody came out, it was, it was well-run, well-done, I'm just signage, and then, uh, thanks for, I think Jay and I talked, it was nice to see them wait until road restrictions were off, because the fire trucks do impact our gravel road significantly, and I saw that in front of the, in front of the property and stuff. The residents were the kindest people, they've been there three and a half, four years, and the cost to renovate the home that was a hundred and thirty years old was about the same as them just building new residence, so it was, it was just neat to see what was going on and the interaction between all of the fire departments, so it was pretty cool.
Jeremy, have a...
Did we find out the cause of the fire we had like two weeks ago?
I believe that's still under investigation.
Okay, and then, uh, I just wanted to point out that despite best efforts from all the people who tried to repave all of the trails to meet our deadline last year, most of them have the same willows growing through the trail again this spring. So I asked Jay and Kevin, when Kevin is back, to look into what the next steps should be to ensure that those don't continue to deteriorate three months after they get paved.
Perfect, appreciate you being on top of that.
Public safety, the notice in the Facebook about the police, and then, was it this week or last week was Public Works Week and stuff? Thank you to all of the men and women that do those things for us.
I just have two quick things, one, uh, the Timberwolves lost, one oh three to one eighteen. SGA had, uh, probably way too many free throws, I'm just gonna go on the limb there. And then, I'm actually trying to see if I can find that stat. The one thing that was brought up by a resident about, he said he talked to a previous council on Trail Haven about getting a stop sign there, and then the previous council had said yes, I don't know the accuracy of that or when that was or the situation, could we look into if that's a possibility, if that's a good idea?
We can look at it, but just initially, I would probably say highly unlikely, because I'm assuming he means coming southbound, but Trail Haven being a collector road.
Gotcha.
We typically, typically don't want to add stop signs where people aren't gonna follow them, especially on the low-volume roadway, it just creates more danger in a lot of spots, because if somebody isn't following it then, and they think they are, um, it can actually set things backwards, so.
Yeah, if he wants a stop sign right at the rise, there's no intersection other than the private drive and stuff, but...
If that's the case, we...
It's a complicated place, but if there could be some maintenance attention done, um, it is in serious tough shape.
We can look at those other things, those are usually more effective, except stop signs, while they, when they work, sure, but the times that they don't, they make things worse, so we don't want to put them in those situations.
You can add signs maybe blind approach both directions, because I've, I've witnessed it too, where I'm coming and somebody's all the way over because of the wash, so.
I will end it with this, uh, it does appear that Shay got thirteen free throws. He had thirty-eight points on twelve for twenty-one shooting and one for two from three, so that's twenty-five points, and he had thirty-eight points, so thirteen free throws. NBA refs suck, and with that, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Uh, all those in paper say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.